All right, if we could all take our seats. This meeting is called to order. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Boynton Beach City Commission Meeting. Today's Tuesday, October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the time is now six oh six P. M. As with all of our meetings, the rules of civility and decorum will be enforced. When discussing an item, commissioners must first be addressed by the chair and not interrupt the speaker. Public comments must be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to any individual on the dais or in the audience. Displays of rudeness, insults, attacks are strictly prohibited. Disrupted behaviors from the audience, limited, not limited to yelling, stamping of feet, and similar acts are strictly prohibited as well. You will receive a warning if disruptions occur, after which you will be asked to leave these chambers, and you will not be readmitted. I'm going to turn now to our city clerk. City clerk, good evening. If you could please begin the roll call.
Mayor Penzerga.
Here.
Vice Mayor Turkin.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. We're going to turn now to our invocation, which is, which will be had by Pastor Bruce Hudson of Christ Fellowship Church. Immediately following, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by me. Let's all stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Let's bow our heads. Well, Father God, we come before you with heavy hearts, just asking for peace, not just for our world, but for our country, for our region, Father, that we know there are so many that desperately need you, that need you to step in to provide unity, to provide comfort, to provide compassion. And so, Father, we just ask that you would do that. We even ask that this meeting tonight would be a light to our world of what it means to be in one accord, Father, that even when we don't see eye to eye, we know that we can unite around the same things, that this commission would be a light to our region of what it is to lead faithfully, to follow you. Father, we are just honored for the time that you give us in this world, for the time that we get to spend, Father, leading others. In your holy and awesome name, we pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Pastor Hudson. We're going to turn now to agenda approval, additions, deletions, and corrections to the agenda. I received three items from staff. The first item is just another announcement regarding Pirate's Fest, so I'm going to add that on to the third item under announcements. There are two items that are being walked on. These are parking agreements to support various events. They will be listed as item sixty and six U. Sixty is proposed resolution number R twenty-three dash one five seven. This is again for parking agreements to support various events. The other item is proposed resolution number R twenty-three dash one five six. Again, that is sixty and six U, and those are the three items I heard from staff. Let me turn now to my left, Commissioner Kelly, if there are any additions, deletions, or corrections.
No, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Board member, Commissioner Hay.
I would like to, this way you want us to pull from consent agenda?
We'll, we'll have an opportunity to pull consent when we get there. All right. Was there anything else? All right. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The only thing I want to add, I know we're discussing something later to potentially put on a referendum in March, so I would like to also add something to discuss for the March referendum. I don't know if that could be tonight or for a future meeting, but I know there has been discussion in the past in some of our former meetings about commissioners having the ability to be here at City Hall and making sure that there's government accountability. And so, my proposal would be a discussion of looking at what it would take or what it looks like to convert a part-time position to a full-time position.
All right, so we have received a proposal from Vice Chair, excuse me, Vice Mayor. Is there support for my colleagues to add that to the agenda for discussion? And Vice Mayor, if this does move forward, I would recommend for future.
Okay.
For future, yeah. All right. Are there any support to add this to the agenda?
I'll second that.
All right. Anyone else? All right, so I see that there is a majority support, so we will add that to future agenda. All right, Vice Mayor, was there anything else?
Um, nope, not for additions or adoptions, deletions. Next, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
The only thing that I might want to add is for eleven A, could we also discuss infrastructure as part of that discussion?
One second, let me pull up eleven A. Eleven A is for the bond that we include, infrastructure. Could you elaborate a little bit more? What about infrastructure?
Just adding it to that conversation.
Oh.
Just for discussion of the board.
Yeah, you can include that today, since we're already talking about it. Okay. Any others from my colleagues, additions, deletions, or corrections? For myself, I would like to add, if there is a support of my commission, and this is not for today, it is only a discussion for a future meeting about potentially combining city properties together for the purpose of creating senior affordable housing. It's something we've all discussed here and there, but I think there are some city properties out there that is currently being underutilized, so I'd like to have the opportunity to discuss which properties they are and what the future could look like for them for a future agenda. Is that all right with everyone?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right. Hearing nothing else from my colleagues, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Amended.
I don't know who was first, the motion from Commissioner Kelly, the second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor of amending the agenda say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose say no. The ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. We are now going to turn to section two informational items by members of the city commission and any disclosures to be made. So I'm going to turn now to Commissioner Cruz. Let's begin with you, and then we'll go around the dais.
I haven't really had any conversations recently, but I do remember having a conversation about item eight A many, many months ago.
All right, that's it?
That's it.
All right. Vice Mayor, any informational items or disclosures?
No disclosures, just for informational. I was able to attend the first Friday Hispanic Heritage Month event. Kudos to Commissioner Cruz, and even more kudos to Gabby and y'all over there. It was an awesome turnout, had a lot of fun, got to see Commissioner Hay salsa a little bit. I was very impressed, and, you know, overall, awesome event. And then I was also able to participate into the National Walk to School Day with Forest Park Elementary, and shout out to both the Fire Department Chief Hugh Bruder and Chief Joe D'Ulio at the Police Department for showing up and bringing the motorcade. The kids loved it, it was super awesome, and, you know, was, was very fortunate to be a part of that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Hay, informational items or disclosures?
No disclosure for me. I did have the opportunity to attend the first Friday celebration in recognition of our Hispanic population. They did teach me the salsa, so I got pretty good at it. Also, I had the opportunity to attend the, on Wednesday, October fourth, attended the wastewater management pension board meeting to get that rolling. And lastly, I probably won't get this name right, but this young man, Kalem Estimi, from the community standard that I've come pretty close to pronouncing. He's not in the audience, is he? Okay. The reason I brought this up is that this young man did an outstanding job with one of our citizens in District Two, Mr. and Mrs. Bo and George Frazier. He went, as far as I'm concerned, over and beyond the call of duty. He came out at night, there was loud music going on, and they could never catch him. This young man took upon himself to come out at night on his own and record it, made a record, and talked to those people about what they were doing, and it got resolved. So I thought, well, maybe a thousand dollars a day is kind of an incentive to, to back off, but I want to say that this young man, he, he came out like ten, eleven o'clock at night, spent a couple hours just, just to make sure that it was real and there was a case, and there was a case. Too often, we, we don't wave the flag for our employees who go over and beyond the call of duty like this young man did, so I would just like to give him his kudos and his flowers while he can still smell them. So can I get you to give a hand for him? Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely, and thank you for that acknowledgement, Commissioner Hay. Let me finish, and I'll come back. Commissioner Cruz, and we'll come back to Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kelly first, and we'll come back to Commissioner Cruz. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just, I don't, just to piggyback on my other colleagues, just, it's been a great month of city events. I'm looking forward to Pirate Fest, but just thank you to events and bargaining and everyone who always pulls together to, to make our events go smoothly. Everyone has a great time. Saturday was a good time at the Fall Festival, so, but I also just quickly wanted to just acknowledge an incident that happened this morning with regard to an abducted child, and I wanted to thank our Police Department, Boca Raton Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, for their swift action in being able to find the child and reunite them with their parent. So I just wanted to say thank you and acknowledge that they are working very hard and deserve our, our praise for what they do. So thank you. My only disclosure that I have, as I did back in November, meet with the Mint Eco people regarding eight A. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I did say we're going to come back to Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say, first of all, thank you to all the staff who attended the very first in a hundred years Hispanic Heritage Celebration. I want to give a special shout out to Melanie, Gabby, Chelsea, and really every staff member who was putting chairs in, taking them down, just doing everything and anything to make the event successful. I also want to thank all of the staff, and I do remember seeing somebody from our sister cities as well in attendance of the event. Thank you for coming and supporting. It definitely meant a lot to me. And I do want to also recognize our Parks and Rec employees for this fantastic Fall's Festival that we just had this weekend. It was amazing. It was exactly what I think about when I think of fall, and it was just such a great family event with the kids' activities and jumping and everything, so I, I personally enjoyed it. Again, I just want to thank all the staff, every single person who did anything at all to make these events happen. Thank you. Then I also wanted to thank Salika for the Economic Development Coffee Mog and the goodies. Definitely thank you for that, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you so much. As for myself, I, my only disclosure is that I met with the representatives of Mint Eco. I don't recall when exactly, it was about several months ago. This is item eight A, and that is it for me. All right, anything else from my colleagues? Last call. All right, we're going to move on to announcements, community and special events, and presentations. So we have two announcements followed by one presentation. The first announcement is the grand opening ceremony for the dog park at J. C. Park. This will be hosted by the Recreation and Parks Department located at twenty-six hundred South Federal Highway on Saturday, November fourth, from ten a.m. to noon. This event is free and open to the public with food trucks, pet-friendly vendors, raffle prizes, and official opening of the new dog park, where dogs will be able to enjoy some off-leash fun. For more information, visit www.boynton-beach.org. The second announcement is the Pirates are coming. It is Pirate's Fest, it is back. It is Saturday and Sunday, October twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, from ten a.m. to five p.m. The address is one twenty East Ocean Avenue Centennial Park Amphitheater in downtown Boynton Beach. Get ready for two days of live music, entertainment, food, costumes, children's activities, shopping, cannons, mermaids, pirates, and more. Pirate Fest is back, we're glad to hear that. The third item here is a presentation of N. F. L. Grassroots Grant Funds by Youth Enrichment Association for Academics and Athletics. This is for the Azale Hester Junior Park Football Field Renovation Project for the insulation of synthetic turf. And who do we have for this presentation? All right, we've got some people approaching. Come on up and begin when you're ready.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners. Justin Johnson, Marketing and Outreach Manager for the City of Boynton Beach. We have some members of the, excuse me, Youth and Richman Association here to make the presentation in public, in person, excuse me, and we also have Beverly Smith, Vice President of Local Initiative Support Corporation, and Kim Miller, Vice President of Community Affairs for the Miami Dolphins, joining us virtually.
Good evening. My name is Michael Burden. I'm the President of Youth and Richman Association for Academics and Athletics. We've been around since two thousand and eleven here in the City of Boynton Beach, pretty much spearheading the youth sports and working with the Parks and Rec Department, keeping the kids active. We are proud to be a part of this project, helping with the grant, with the NFL grant to have the turf field out of Azale Hester. It's been a long time coming. So with that being said, our organization would like to present the first part of a hundred thousand dollar check to the City of Boynton Beach for the NFL grant.
Good evening. Casey Young, Recreation and Parks Director. We do want to give a opportunity for the representatives online to say a few words. Again, the grant is through the Miami Dolphins, the NFL Foundation, and also the List Foundation here. So the two representatives that are online, if you allow them a brief moment to say a few words about the grant.
Absolutely. Manny, if they are online, could you please unmute them? And go ahead and just introduce yourself. Are they online?
Kim Miller, from the Miami Dolphins Foundation.
All right, it looks like they're not, it's all right. Oh, there we go.
We have Kim Miller. Kim, you're unmuted.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you to the, the city for allowing me to be here tonight and taking this time to recognize. Like you said, it sounds like a long time coming, so on behalf of the Miami Dolphins, our Junior Dolphins program in partnership with the NFL Foundation and the Local Initiative Support Corporation, really excited about this grant awarded to the Azale Hester Center. The overall grant is two hundred and fifty thousand, and so we're excited of, eventually we get the, the full amount there. And we just really feel like it's, it's important to have these strong community partnerships, creating safe and fun places to play football, and frankly, build skills that are valuable in all aspects of life. So we truly appreciate the partnership and opportunity to grow the game and build fans, but most importantly, positively impact youth. So again, thank you for the opportunity to partner and to speak today.
Thank you. Casey, any closing words?
Well, we also have Beverly Smith from the List Foundation. Again, the grant is through three different organizations, so we want to give her opportunity to say a few words as well, if she's online.
Not hearing it, so.
I'll, I'll close it out. Just want to thank NFL Foundation, List Foundation, and also the NFL Grassroots Foundation for this grant, and also Youth and Richman Association for Academics and Athletics, just really a, a community partnership to improve the Azale Hester facility, football field. Again, if you haven't been by to see kind of the progress, the park is looking great with the synthetic turf is in, and then also the bleachers are coming in. So again, we're really looking forward to having a world-class facility here in Boynton Beach. Really excited about it, and I hope the community is as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Young, and thank you to everybody involved, including to all of our staff who were instrumental in making it happen. We're now going to move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is public audience. As, yes, Commissioner, go ahead.
If I may.
Absolutely.
I just want to give an FYI, the Pirate Fest, we are all happy that it's back. But as we learned at one of the conferences last year, that this year is being sponsored by the city because the CRA can no longer do that. They can open it up once, but we were told that they couldn't do it on a continuous basis. It was against the law and the rules. But just for your information, that the City of Boynton sponsored the Pirate Fest this year because it's against the rule for the CRA to continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hay. We're going to move on to public audience. As always, each person is limited to three minutes. Your comments must pertain to the business of the city commission, so anything not related to the city commission, unfortunately, I will have to cut off your time. Any attacks either directly to anybody in the commission or in the audience are prohibited, and you will be addressing the commission as a whole. As always, state your name for the record and begin when you're ready. Good evening.
Hi, Susan Oyer, Seacrest Estates, Boynton Beach, which we really need Andrew to work on that name. What needs to get off your desk and on, on to happening. I want to say thank you to the commissioners, Kelly, Mayor Penzerga, and Commissioner Turkin, Vice Mayor Turkin, for doing the right thing at the CRA meeting last week. I heard all about it. Thank you.
Ms. Oyer, I appreciate your comments, but.
I'm not coming back.
The CRA meeting.
I know, except I'm not coming back for that, so I'm just saying thank you now for doing the right thing. I want to bring up the state of the cemetery. I have sent emails to Andrew in the last twenty-four hours, and the staff have responded appropriately. I don't know when the last time you guys were out there, but the weeds and the grass are growing over several of the flat. I don't know what the heck you call them. Headstones, thank you. Not all of them, but enough of them that it's noticeable. I was out there digging off, you know, this much dirt and grass and weeds off my aunt's headstone the other day, so I think whoever you all are subletting to, they are not necessarily doing their job, and they even know I'm going to be out there four to six times a year, so definitely make sure my families get done and the little path to and from, because those are the ones I take a look at. And it's not just my families, there's others as well. I want to say Quantum Boulevard median still need to have something happen to them. They are even worse looking than they were before. It's just a bunch of dead mulch or whatever it is that's there on, on Gateway and Quantum, and it looks horrible, and you have the second biggest employer in the city, private employer in the city with hundreds and hundreds of people driving by every single day, plus all the people who live in the condos, work in the literacy coalition, and it, it looks like a disgusting mess in addition to the palm trees that are to the bane of my existence to have to drive around those horrid fronds, and Adam, who has to get my emails saying this needs to be cleaned up. So please, let's do something. And I also want to ask, and this is just kind of a general question, I, I think I want to know who the people are on the dais that are taking the thirty-five hundred sixty-dollar taxpayer-funded HSAs so we can monitor that taxpayer money that's being, going out to people who have jobs and who already get HSAs as city employees. So don't think I'm forgetting this, because that thirty-five hundred dollars times five will add up really quickly to pay for something in the city that needs paying for, like maybe, you know, the median ships on Quantum. So I will be checking and monitoring that, so, you know, all of you have jobs, you don't need the taxpayer-funded HSA, and those of you who do, well, you know, will know who you are. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to the next speaker. State your name for the record and begin when you're ready.
Cindy Falco de Carrato. I just heard the lady say that they donated, they donated two hundred and fifty thousand, but I only saw a check for a hundred thousand. Where, where's the extra money going? I don't know, is there something you want to maybe check into? It's quite a little money going stage left. I also wanted to bring up behind my home, there's an alleyway, and it is disgusting. No one ever mows it, it is, belongs to the city, and I have called, and my neighbors have called, and it's something that keeps getting overlooked. I shouldn't have to call to make the city do their job. I also wanted to bring up about impact fees for the art, the art cultural committee. I, I think we need to stop taking impact fees, because it looks like the people have no say in the matter, and it looks like everybody seem to make their own rulings, and it doesn't matter what we, the people, say, that we're the ones that actually have to look at it. I think the money could be used better. I think we could do some really great stuff with an impact fee, if you're going to get it from new buildings, and we can make our city look really fabulous and get roads that work really well. I also don't want to see impact fees for parks, and I do want to know where the money comes from for the Juneteenth things that they offer. We do pay for tents and different things like that. Where's the money coming from? And I do not want to also give impact fees to the police. They make eighty million dollars a year. They surely can find a good way to spend their money. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to the next speaker. State your name for the record, begin when you're ready. Good evening.
Christine Roberts. I need some clarification before I speak.
Sure, let me pause your time.
Okay, I'm here to talk about the termination of Twee Shutt.
So that's a CRA business matter, so that is usually, that it will be at the CRA meeting. This is the city commission meeting.
So it would be proper to go to the next meeting, and I can voice.
You got it. And I would ask staff who is near you, they can give you the date of the next meeting. All right, thank you so much. All right, last call for in-person public audience. Now is the time to approach the podium. Reset the clock.
Hi, Ernest Manoli, seven-ten Northeast Seven Street, Boynton Beach, known as Harbor Hall Inlet Club One. I continue to come before the commission in seeking help for my community and my building, which keeps getting in worse and worse and worse situation. I, I don't know, I hear people come here and say, oh, you know, I, I exchange emails with the commission, and I get an answer, and I, I don't get any answers. I don't know if people don't like me, I don't know what it is, but I don't get any answers. And I'm basically trying to save my home, my neighborhood, and the building, and I'm getting no, no help from the city, no help, not from any department, not from any board, not from any commissioner, not from, not from anybody. So that's a big question, and I also want to bring out that incidents that came up at this, well, we can't talk about the CRA, okay, incidents that come up at the post office on, on Seacrest are happening again. So I, I don't know where the commission wants to go with this, but there's people in the post office that don't like certain people like me, who keep trying to save that post office, and whenever I go there, they bring the police in to criminally trespass me out of there. So it keeps happening over and over again, and the police really get a kick out of it, but you do know that I'm reporting it to the governor's office, and no matter who I reach out to for some kind of help, again, I get no response. Thank you.
All right, seeing no one else, all right. It looks like maybe one last person is approaching the podium. All right, this is last call for in-person public comments, after which we will go to those online. As always, state your name for the record and begin when you're ready.
My name is Katie Gatsin Miller, and I live at ten fifty-seven Southwest Twenty-Eighth Avenue in Boynton Beach. I've been there forty-two years. I want to know why we don't have police officers coming in Gulfview Harbor. On this way you get a police officer, you have to call them. On this way you get a police officer, you have to call them. And I was late for my doctor's appointment because on a Friday, the trash trucks come along, and they have a lot of trash on the side of the road, and they have to pick it up, but cars are parked on the side of the road. So the truck have to stay in the middle of the road. So I was 15 minutes late for my doctor's appointment because the garbage truck, not the garbage truck, the trash truck was picking up trash, but they was in the middle of the road. They had no other choice because cars was parked on both sides of the road. And when I got my driver's license, if I was headed east, I'm headed east, I would have to park that way and not this way. But cars are parked, I don't know, cars parked wherever they want to park. If they want to go to the friend's house over here, they park their car there. And there are driveways that they can pull up in, but they don't do it. So I want to know why we don't get a police officer in Gulfview Harbor. I have property on Northeast 11th Avenue, and I can be over that one aisle, and I bet I see three police officers' cars pass. But I can stand all day in Gulfview Harbor, and not one police officer car passes through. So I wish you all could do something about the traffic in Gulfview Harbor. Thank you. Oh, and by the way, these magazines that you all give to people on Northeast 11th and 4th Street, I guess Reverend Hay, you got one. We don't get these. We live in this, Gulfview Harbor is a part of Boynton Beach. So I would like to receive these magazines also. Thank you.
Ma'am, ma'am. We have police representatives, the deputy chief of police is in the back. Tenille, can you please raise your hand? Can you go back there? They'll do an extra patrol for your neighborhood, and you'll get the police presence that you need. You're welcome.
All right, thank you. We're now going to move on to online public comments. Manny, how many do we have with their digital hands raised?
Mayor, we have two hands raised.
I did not pick up on it, what did you say?
We have two hands raised.
I heard two hands raised, all right. For those of you online, I will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining. Who was that? Was it Manny? All right, whoever that was from IT, if you could unmute one person. Who are they? And Stephen Grant for speaker, all right. Please begin when you're ready, and I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining on the clock.
Good evening, this is Stephen B. Grant, Esquire 136 Northeast 3rd Avenue, Boynton Beach. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commission. I just want to thank you for all that you've been doing. I attended the 10-4 event on October 4th that the police held, and I thought it was a great way to get the community more involved with the police activity. And I feel that ever since this past year, the city has been getting safer. And so I want to commend the chief and the city manager for doing what's right to keep the citizens safe. In addition, I also want to thank, I guess, the utility for having the blue and white to show support for Israel at this time. In the past, the city has bought Israeli bonds to show support for Israel. And I just wanted to know if there's any further support that the City Commission would like to do on behalf of the people of Israel. Last, I'd like to thank my fellow citizen for getting some additional police presence in Gulfview Harbor that we are on the southwest, and we don't normally see as many police vehicles as we do along Seacrest. So thank you. And last, I want to appreciate the police for donations to the Bill Tome Foundation. They do a great work in our city and look forward to working with them in the future.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to the second and final online speaker. Manny, who is it? And go ahead and unmute them.
Valencia Spells Anderson, you are unmuted. Please click the mic next to your name, please.
Good evening, this is Valencia Spells Anderson, 210 Northwest 7th Avenue here in Boynton. I am the chapter president for the Omicron Delta Zeta Chapter of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. I just wanted to say thank you to Mayor Penserga for being one of our panelists at the town hall we had for the tri-city area on October the 5th. We truly appreciate you. And to Neil DeCoste for being in the audience. It was a great panel, and we appreciate you informing the community, being president and representing Boynton very well. Thank you.
Thank you, those were very kind words. All right, I believe that concludes all online speakers. IT, can you confirm I didn't miss anybody?
Yes, that is all of the online speakers.
Thank you so much. Public audience is now closed. Commissioner Kelly, I see your hand is up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Really quick, because it just came to my mind, can we add to future agenda items the audio system and what we can do about that? And maybe we need to revisit because, you know.
I was just thinking the same thing. You know, I think this is what the second or third meeting, and in the past, it's a little bit, it wasn't as bad.
Right.
But it seems to be getting worse. So we don't need to amend the agenda. Clearly, there's consensus, is that correct with everybody on the right? If we can direct the city manager, please take care of that. All right, maybe we need to switch platforms, whatever you need to do. All right, thank you so much. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, one thing I want to address, the alleyways. So I know we see that come up here and there as far as abandoning that and selling it to a homeowner if they request it. I know, Adam, we had, we had one in Forest Park. I don't know if it's the same one that was discussed earlier, but can we maybe get a map and identify and start working on that? And see if that's something palatable to our residents to acquire?
So Vice Mayor, my recommendation is you have a conversation first with the city manager. That's something that could be handled by staff.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Okay, to gather information. Okay, so that was the end of public audience. We're going to move on to administrative. There's only one item, which is Advisory Board Appointments. Let me just go through the list and announce to the public of the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, many vacancies, no applicants. The Education and Youth Advisory Board, three vacancies, no applicants. The Library Board, three vacancies, no applicants. Recreation and Parks Board, we do have one applicant. Cheyenne, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that correctly, Cheyenne Rahman. And this is, the first nomination goes to Commissioner Cruz. This is for the regular seat, it's a two-year term. And Commissioner Cruz, is that a nomination you would like to make?
I'll go ahead and make that nomination.
Sorry. All right, so the nomination came from Commissioner Cruz. I heard a second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor of appointing Cheyenne Rahman to the Recreation and Parks Board for the regular seats, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. The Senior Advisory Board has three openings, and there are no applicants. And with that, unless there's something else, that concludes the administrative portion of the agenda. All right, let's move on to the next section, which is Consent Agenda. We have a lengthy consent agenda. I want to remind my colleagues, we did have three, two items that we added on, those parking agreements for the events. Let me turn to my colleagues, are there any items you would like to pull? I think Commissioner Hay, you had kind of alluded to pulling maybe an agenda item.
Yes, I would like to pull Item 6N as a Nancy.
6N, let me find it. This is the sponsor agreement for the State Housing Initiatives and Partnership Rapid Rehousing Program with Vida Nova. And I see the representatives are here. Good evening and welcome. So 6N is being pulled, any other requests? Was, is any other request from you, Commissioner Hay?
No, that was it.
Commissioner Kelly.
Oh, thank you.
Vice Mayor? No, all right. Commissioner Cruz?
I was going to pull the same one, so we're good.
All right, let's have a motion to approve the remainder of Consent Agenda. Motion came from Commissioner Kelly, second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor of approving the remainder of Consent Agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. Now we will address Item 6N, Proposed Resolution R23-152. This is the sponsor agreement for the State Housing Initiatives and Partnership Ship Rapid Rehousing Program with Vida Nova Inc. And before us is Mr. RJ Ramirez. Good evening. Oh, hold on one second. All right, go ahead.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioner, this is RJ Ramirez, and the Community Improvement Manager for the city. This item is in agreement with Vida Nova Incorporated, and is funding that comes from the CHIP program, the State Housing Initiative Partnership Program. And this is an amendment that was done to the local housing assistance plan to be able to assist homeless individuals in the community. So as a part of that, we got 192,000 on the year 21 in program income. These allow me to be able to allocate these funds to be able to assist homeless individuals in the community. So a notice of funding was announced through the city website. And also, I reached out to the nonprofit organization that assists homeless individuals in the community to be able to submit application for funding. Only two applications were submitted, one from Boynton Beach Community Development Corporation, and one from Vida Nova. After carefully review on the application, I recommend City Commission to be able to fund Vida Nova for the amount of $200,000 to be able to assist youth in the community that are homeless, 18 or 24 years old. Representative from Vida Nova are here. And if it's okay with City Commission, they have a very small presentation for Commission, and I am here to entertain any question you may have at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Let's go to the Commission for Comments and Questions. Commissioner Hay, since you pulled this item, let's begin with you, and we'll go around the dais.
I'm just glad to hear that. This 192,000, is it for one year or how long?
Yeah, exactly. So the CHIP grant, the CHIP program comes with set aside. So the city has gotten some funds in the last three years of these action, local housing system plan. And so this one, set aside, just to make the long story short, because I can go into too much detail unless you want me to. But this grant requires for any funding allocation that is given to local governments, 75% of that grant has to go toward construction. So 10% of that goes, after that goes to administrative, and 50% of that can go toward other activities, could go either to help with purchase assistance for individuals that are applying for purchase assistance, that we can do some sort of down payment assistance and even some gap financing, or I can allocate those funds for other activities such as giving to the homeless community. So these new strategy, what they call a housing strategy, that was added to the local housing system plan because there is a need in the community to assist homeless individual. So I thought that was a good cause, be able to assist those individuals in the community that are homeless, and put as much money as I can toward that cause to be able to assist homeless individuals in the community. So because we had, once again, when someone sells a property before the 15-year term of a purchase assistance or house rehabilitation, those funds comes back to the program, which allow me that those funds are not tied up to the 75% construction set aside, and I can be able to utilize them to be able to assist homeless individuals in this particular case. So any program income that comes to that, moving forward, I will be able to put it toward the rapid rehousing to be able to assist homeless individual. So once again, this one, there is a process where I have to open all notice of funding, and all those nonprofit that assist homeless individuals in the community can apply. So, and that was a particular case with this notice of funding. So coming in the future, for instance, next year, I have, I believe, about $750,000 that I can put some money aside for assist homeless individual. And on the year 2023 that we're calling on, I got another $994,000 that I can also put some money aside to be able to assist homeless individuals as well, in addition to any program income that come back into the program.
So you'll be able to help about 600 people, is that what I?
No, but this is, this is it. The program, as the amendment was added to the local housing assistance plan. So the, it is a grant, one-time life, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity grant, where up to $10,000 can given to homeless individuals that I can assist them to, to get a place to leave up to certain period of time. And in this particular case, once again, after review the application of Vida Nova, Vida Nova has its service because not just giving the funds to homeless individual is the end of it. They have to have a wraparound services where they actually have the supporting service for them to become self-sufficient in the long run. That's going to be objective of this, of this strategy. So an individual has to be able to, you know, to be a part of this program, be able to obtain a job, obtain an education for a certain period of time, and have the support systems to be able to become self-sufficient. So in this particular case, once again, Vida Nova has a small presentation where they will explain what is it that these funds are, how is it going to be used, and how is that they're going to assist the youth in Boynton Beach. And I just want to be very clear to City Commission that these funds are going to remain in Boynton Beach. It's going to be target for youth that are located in Boynton Beach, even though the homeless community is transient, and it's very hard to target where they are located. But nonetheless, we're going to do everything possible to be able to target them by partnering with the school district and find out which one of perhaps of the students that are going, that are homeless, that need homes. And Vida Nova has an excellent program where they can be able to assist these youth.
Very good, RJ, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And if you would like to see the presentation, Vida Nova has it ready. If not, then just let me know.
Would my colleagues like to see it? Okay, it looks like we have enough information. Okay, to make a decision. Excellent. RJ, and to Jeff and Darlene of Vida Nova, I just want to thank everybody. Let me just add, Commissioner, I know how important the homeless initiative is to you, so thank you for this. But I also want to remind everybody, in a past meeting, I did mention that after speaking with the school district, they have a program that tracks homeless kids in the city alone. For example, they had counted almost 300 homeless or housing insecure students. That means they may not necessarily be living on the street, but they're living car or from apartment to apartment, or whatever the case may be exactly. So thank you for the work you're doing. This is going to change so many people's lives. Commissioner Hay, any final comments, and then we'll go around the board.
No.
All right, go ahead, Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. No, I don't really have any questions. This is a not-for-profit that I support. I actually gave some of my community funds just recently to this organization. They are out there doing the hard work, making sure that our youth have, you know, they have enough on their plates. And to have one less thing that they have to worry about is where they're going to sleep at night. I think that, you know, they're doing the great work. And, you know, thank you, RJ, for getting this out there. We have this, have these funds available that we can, we can use and give back to, to our residents. So I'm in support of this, thank you.
Thank you. Let's turn now to Vice Mayor, followed by Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, RJ. Just to clarify for the public, this is coming from CHIP funds, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, this is strictly coming from CHIP funds.
Can you clarify that, that between the normal? This isn't coming from the budget, correct?
No, sir. Okay. This is a grant that we get through from the state. It's called the State Housing Initiative Partnership Program. And that is discretionary grants that the city has gotten in the last few years. And as the housing market has continued to, has challenges, the state has increased those amounts. And once again, those, as I explained before, the set aside dictate that we're supposed to use up to 75% for construction, which I want to clarify that, that the purchase assistance program or the rehabilitation program doesn't suffer by me to be able to provide this assistance to the homeless individuals as well. Because I have enough funds where I can run the, actually, four programs that I have right now running when it comes to the housing programs. And so this one absolutely comes straight from the grants.
Awesome, I appreciate you, RJ. You're very good at what you do. And anytime we can utilize grant funding in a healthy community, it's huge. So thanks for that clarification for the public.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Cruz?
I think most of the things have already been said. Thank you so much for everything you do, and I see Vida Nova here. Thank you for all you do as well. I think this is a great initiative. I know that, I know you guys have a really great program, and I'm a little bit familiar with it. So definitely thank you for all the work you do to help with homeless youth. You know, in the future, we also want to think about our seniors. And I'm sorry, that's my constituents. But, you know, we want to think about that because it's, you know, it's a prevalent issue. So, you know, I think this is a great program. And in addition to that, maybe in the future, if there's an opportunity. I don't know if Villanova could serve that too, or maybe it's it's out of your range because of your, the way that you guys are set up. It's for youth, so I understand that. You know, but maybe potentially if there's an opportunity to help. Senior citizens that are on the verge of homelessness, I think that's something that I would definitely support looking into.
Yeah, absolutely. And if I may clarify that, Commissioner Cruz. So these funds that I'm. If with the approval of commission, obviously, given to Villanova is for this specific program. These funds, you know, we're going to spend it during this year. Nonetheless, because I have in place the this amendment now, except the repertory housing. If there is any seniors, obviously, that are homeless, they can directly come to me and I can be able to assist them. But once again, given someone that is at the virtual homeland, it's just the funds to be able to 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 put a Band-Aid per se. On their situation doesn't really help without the support system for them to be able to either go through the process or get in disability. So they can actually continue to have permanent housing in the long run. But I this process, and once again, just because I by myself, like, there's so much I can do in a fast pace. But nonetheless, I have funds available that I can be able to assist seniors as well. So in addition, I have the limited rehab program, which is the grant to the elderly. Where I had gone right now, where a lot of seniors are taking advantage of and the homes are being repaired as a grant. So they're getting thirty thousand dollars from CDBG and also that's the other amendment that was approved in the local housing system plan. Where I also given them out of the chip funds another twenty thousand dollars. So they're actually getting up to fifty thousand dollars in as a grant for the repairs of their roof or windows or any accessibility to their homes. So that one also is provided to to this elderly and or disabled individuals.
Sounds great. Thank you so much for all you do. And I can tell you that my constituents are very happy with the support they've gotten from your department. So thank you again. That's all I have.
Thank you, everybody. This is proposed resolution number R twenty three dash one five two. This is item six N on the agenda. May I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Six N.
Second.
Motion came from Commissioner Hay the second from Vice Mayor Turkin. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. All those who oppose say no. The ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Candace, if I could ask you to please get their contact information. All right, we're going to move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is consent bids and purchases over one hundred thousand dollars. Are there any items that my colleagues would like to pull? Let me turn to my right this time. Commissioner Cruz, any requests?
If we could make it brief, could we just give a quick, brief introduction on seven A, just for the public's awareness?
All right, so you're pulling item seven A with the request to keep the presentation brief from staff. All right, any other requests? Vice Mayor, Commissioner Hay, Commissioner Kelly? All right, may I have a motion to approve the remainder of consent bids and purchases? Vice Mayor made the motion and who made the second, Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor of the motion to approve consent bids and purchases say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose say no. The ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously. We are now turning to item seven A. This is the purchase order for the design of Pioneer Canal Park Boat Ramp and Dock Improvements. Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor and Commissioner Andrew Mack, Deputy City Manager. This is a project that we're standing up. We currently, the the boat ramp at Pioneer Canal Park is is damaged. Kevin Ramsey, he's I didn't know he was here. I'm sorry. I like Kevin's speed. This is project.
Mike, please. You're on. Okay.
Sixteen years and fourth time in commission, so a lot back. Hello, Commission, Mayor, Mayor, Commissioners, Vice Mayor. Pioneer Canal Park, it's it's done its time. And it's dilapidated, structurally defective, it's unsafe for the public. And so what's before you is a cost to design a new boat ramp and it'll have ADA access. And be another one like a lawyer park. So that's what it's about.
All right, Commissioner Cruz, that was a brief presentation.
Sounds good to me. Thank you. You know what? We do so many great things and a lot of times it's on consent. So people don't really get to know when we're fixing parks, when we're doing the painting and stuff that's necessary that maybe somebody said, hey. I've seen an issue with this park. FYI, it's getting fixed. So that was the reason for the. Thank you.
Great. Any other comments on this item from my colleagues?
I'm just happy to see some action over in Skylake.
We're everywhere. We're everywhere. From Escher Field to Pioneer Canal Park, down south.
Very good.
Appreciate the work.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion to approve item seven A on the agenda?
So move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hay and a second from Commissioner Cruz. All those in favor of the motion to approve seven A say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose say no. The ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously. We are now moving on to public hearing. I am now going to turn to our council. This is the Mint Eco Car Wash item. Council, if you could read it into the records, wherein the relevant individuals.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor David Tulsa, Centered City Attorney. This is item eight A. Which is the Mint Eco Wash Conditional Use and New Major Site Plan. Consideration to approve the request for conditional use COUS twenty three dash zero zero one. And New Major Site Plan NWSP twenty three dash zero zero one. For Mint Eco Wash to allow a new four thousand four hundred fourteen square foot car wash building. Cover detail areas, covered vacuum areas and associated site improvements on a one point three seven acre parcel located at. Twenty two fifty West Wilbright Road in the C three commercial, community commercial zoning district. The applicant is Josh Nichols and Schmidt Nichols. As this is a quadricidal item, I would ask if there's anybody in the audience who is going to be presenting any. Testimony to the City Commission this evening that they stand and be sworn in at this time. If you are not sworn in, the City Commission may not consider your testimony as evidence, either in support or against this matter. So if you're standing up, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony give me the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the true self you got? Thank you very much. You may be seated.
Thank you. We're going to turn now to the applicant to hear from them, after which we will hear from staff. After that, we will hear from the public and then we will proceed in reverse order. All right? One second. Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Commissioners. Josh Nichols for the record, which meant Nichols, and we're representing Mint Eco Car Wash this evening. Before I get into the meat of the. Presentation and the request, I just wanted to introduce Jeff Jervis, who is the co-founder of Mint Eco. Just to tell you a little bit about Mint Eco, why they're different and why they're excited to be in Boynton Beach. So I will turn it over to Jeff.
Great. And if you all would like, we do have two podiums, so nobody has to crowd on one. So you have options.
I'll let Josh go over there. Mayor, Vice Mayor Commission, thank you for your time. Jeff Jervis, co-founder of Mint Eco Car Wash. Company that we founded about four years years ago in West Palm Beach. Just want to say a little bit about us and take you through the first four slides of our deck. Not quite sure. All right, I don't feel so bad now. Let's be frank here, many in this industry are comfortable providing standard or substandard products. And we are not one of them. We got in this industry, provide an extraordinary product. And to build a great organization that would allow us to deliver that product consistently. We focus not only on the service we provide, which is essential, but also, and more importantly, on the way we make people feel. I think we're one of the few car washes out there that will attempt to elicit an emotion other than potentially frustration. And it all starts with a site, as you can see from the images here. We work very hard on creating very simple, beautiful sites. We over landscape as far as any municipal standards go, but our desire is to create beautiful buildings. There's no reason that a car wash can't be beautiful. As a matter of fact, our site on Southern Boulevard. Is often considered the best looking building on the entire street, including, I think it probably stops when you get to the intercoastal. Extends to our product mix. We are different. We don't just offer what modern car washes are doing, which is a tunnel with three vacuums. We also do interior services and detail services. And it ends, most importantly, with how we treat you. As a result, we've won the best car wash in Palm Beach County two years in a row from the Palm Beach Post. We are hope to win it again a third time. The voting is occurring right now. We've run, we've won three environmental awards. One from the Palm Beach Post and two from different chambers of commerce for our environmental posture. And we have won a Best Places to Work Award from the Sun Sentinel. And I do believe we are the only car wash I know that has won an award of that title. Try again with the slides. Good job. In addition to customers, we focus on community. Every time we buy a wash, we draw a three mile circle around that wash and we solicit. Or we reach out to every religious organization, every educational institution, every charity within that three mile circle. And offer to support those organizations charitably. So far this year, we have four car washes operationally right now. We've donated over three hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty three. To charities within the the radii of our existing washes. We also have a program where we wash every single police and first responder vehicle for free. A lot of people look at municipal contracts as opportunities for profit. We look at, we're a little corny. If you were put Kevlar on for me, we'll wash your car for free is our little jingle. But we think that it's well deserved and we also are very happy with the fact that a lot of police officers find difficulty finding clean bathrooms. And we've had the Secret Service, the Sheriff's Department, about six or seven different police departments ask us if they could use our bathrooms. When their officers are on shift and we happily oblige. We adopt a park for every wash that we own. We will adopt a park for this wash and we'll be looking for input from the commission and or any residents as to which wash we should adopt. We clean that wash, we clean that park at least six times a week with our site staff and our headquarters staff. And we're actually getting some pretty good pickup from the communities supporting us as well. We focus on the environment. We call ourselves tree hugging capitalists. Believing that being a good steward of the environment is not only the right thing to do, but that we'll be rewarded for it by our customers. Starts with water. We recycle every single drop of water that our tunnel uses. Our washes are pitched. There's a trench in the middle of our tunnel. We have eight recycling tanks at the end of the wash. We gravity filter water through those eight tanks and then we pull it back into the wash. And over fifty percent of the water that we use in the wash is in fact recycled. In addition, there's no industry regulations, so we have a voluntary commitment with respect to the chemistry we use. Makes it a little harder to clean cars, but we think it's the right thing to do and we're happy to. Put up with the additional work we have to do. All of our chemistry is biodegradable, non toxic, non toxic to fish and non toxic to humans. We also share an audit on our website and have got some traction with the industry for the industry adopt new voluntary chemistry regulations themselves. So making progress there. And it goes well beyond that. We just came up with our latest one, which is all of our toilet paper is now bamboo. It's more sustainable. And then lastly, and most importantly, our employees. We endeavor to have our employees feel and behave like owners. Starts with making a job at Mint Eco a career opportunity and not just a paycheck. Initially, it's training. Continues with continuous development plan for each employee. Complemented by the tools for their advancement. What do I mean by that? We have a lot of English as a second language employees and we offer three times a week at each one of our washes. Level one English classes for free. And then we offer three times a week, level two English classes at our headquarters. For employees to allow them to advance from being a line staff member into customer service roles, et cetera. We hire locally and from and promote from within. We currently have a manager who started as a line staff manager. Our line staff, our employees are the highest paid in the industry. Our starting wages are about fifteen to thirty dollars an hour with tip for line staff employees. Customer service employees make twenty five to thirty five dollars an hour. Our assistant managers make fifty to seventy five thousand dollars a year and our managers make, actually we just raised our manager salaries. They make a hundred to a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year. So we pay very well. We ask them to do very complicated job and we're delighted to do so. We've been trying to get into Boynton Beach for two years, a little longer than two years maybe. And we're very excited to have found the location on Wilbright and Congress. We believe that we have had success or that we will have success in the market. And we've worked hard with your staff, who has been wonderful to work with on creating an efficient, efficient and effective site design. And with that, I there are questions. I'll answer them otherwise. And we'll turn it back over to Josh to see if he can figure out how to advance slides. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Apparently, oh, you got it. Uh-oh, went too far. It's just rifling right through, isn't it? Think I need to get closer to the screen. Thank you. Sorry about that. So again, to start with the formal request. So we are here this evening to talk about a conditional use in a major site plan amendment. For a automatic car wash of approximately four thousand four hundred and fourteen square feet. All right, so here's a quick look at the land use and zoning, so we will not be having to change the zoning or land use as part of this request. So we do have office commercial as the land use and C three community commercial for the zoning. See that come up on the screen. So again, as Jeff mentioned, this is a unique location that was found that that could support the car wash. It's an existing abandoned bank site. So if, as everyone familiar, just east of Congress on the south side of Wilbright Road. So again, this this building is fairly nonconforming. It was built some time ago. And the purpose of this is also to bring all these nonconformities up to speed. Everything's to code above and beyond, and we'll go through those details as well. So here's the proposed site plan and off to the side, I'll kind of go through briefly some of these specifications. But as you can see, access is from one point along Wilbright Road. You come in and you make a right into the into the queue. The queue is actually double what is required by the code. So we're looking at about at least twelve spaces, required as six. It's about one point three seven acres. Our building coverage is about sixteen percent of what would be allowed on on this type of project in this zoning. Total FAR is seven times less than what would be allowed on the site. Required parking, we're actually above and beyond by ten spaces overall on the site. So we're adequate there and exceeding. And the structure meets all setbacks and actually exceeds that as well as the sustainability aspect in the number of trees. We're actually increasing the number of trees provided by seventeen on the site. So the benefit of this development, so again, a redevelopment, adaptive reuse, this building is sitting there abandoned. You know, there's vagrants, there's people that are unwanted, that are that are hanging around the site. So we really want to get it back up, back getting income producing, get it back on the tax rolls. So it's and also we're meeting the new architectural sustainability design standards that were adopted. As well as the general design and exterior building standards. So all of those have been taken into account. This will be a fully active, staffed and secured site. Again, to eliminate the loitering, eyes on the corridor, having a new business here. And coordination with local law enforcement, they do very well with that on their other locations. It provides landscape buffers along the perimeter to visually screen all the proposed, this proposed use from all the adjacent properties. We're fulfilling the city's adopt adopted sustainable development standards. We're required twenty five points and this project has attained thirty six points. So above and beyond on. Attaining those points for sustainability. There's also a demolition of an existing pole sign that's nonconforming that will be coming down and will be in compliance with a new monument sign on the project. True, the box is on there, but I'll go through. So we have the conditional use standards and again, we have to. Comply with all of these as we go through the process. Staff has reviewed these and is in agreement with this. But I will go through some of these highlights. So condition conditional standards, one through twelve. So we, again, access for Wilbright, we have fire department circulation, they've signed off on the project. We've got off street parking. Again, we're in excess of the required by ten. We have no light trespass and any noise that is perceived would be mitigated right at the property line. If not before that with landscaping and other measures that have been taken. The refuse areas, we've provided a dumpster with a co-located loading area, so that has been satisfied and staff has reviewed those details. Next, so utilities, water, sewer and electric are all to the site already, so we'll be reconnecting those on onsite. And those have been provided on the civil plans, screening and buffering. So we have the. Screening and buffering. So we have the landscaping along the right of way, which was minimal landscape there to begin currently. So we'll be upgrading that and we've got buffers all around that meet the minimums as well as along the south boundary. We're not required, but we provided a two-foot berm with its six-foot wall. So again, providing additional screening to the neighbors. Signs will be the non, non-conforming sign will be taken down and a new conforming sign will be placed there. All the required setbacks are in line with what the code requires. General compatibility with adjacent properties. So we have met with the neighbor there and have reviewed the plan and they're, they're okay with the, with the layout and in agreement. The height of the buildings, we're in, we're in compliance with the max, the maximums 45 feet. We're well below that. With the one tower feature hitting 30 feet. The economic benefit, we don't see any negative impact to the, to the economic effects. If anything, it's again, producing new jobs, putting new money into the, into the local economy. Where applicable, the proposed use further purpose, the intent, the corresponding mixed use, we don't have a mixed use redevelopment corridor here. So it's not applicable. Compliance and abatement of nuisances and hazards in accordance with the operational performance standards. So the project will not create any nuisance or hazard that would negatively affect neighboring properties and staff has again reviewed those. And I will end on this conclusion page, but basically just, this is just a recap of going through all those standards that we've met. We've also gone to the county for their traffic performance standards and we've met all those requirements. We've demonstrated compliance with chapter three and section 4C, the conditional use standards. We've fulfilled and exceeded the sustainability development requirements. And with that, we are in agreement with the staff's conditions, I believe, one through 18 and staff's recommendation of approval. We're here to answer any questions you may have and I really appreciate the time.
Thank you. Before we entertain questions from my colleagues, let's turn to staff for their presentation. And then after which we will entertain questions from the dais.
President Board, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Staff, right now doesn't have really anything to add.
Just state your name.
Louis van Cosma, Senior Planner. My apologies. The applicant's presentation was very thorough, so we don't really have much to, other than we recommend approval of both the conditional use. Application and major site plan application.
Alright, thank you.
We're here to answer any questions.
This board appreciates brief presentations. So thank you for that. Let's turn now to my colleagues for questions for either the applicant or staff, after which we will turn to public comment. Let's begin on my right, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor. So I do have to say that I went to see your location in Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard. And it was a very nice building. Everything seemed very clean. It looks pretty good. I'm really, really happy to welcome hopefully this new business to our city, creating, you know, good paying jobs for our residents. I think that's super important for everyone. Biodegradable, non-chemical, that's, that's great. I mean, and you're not required to do that. So definitely in support of that. I, I just asked the city manager, you know, how do we, how do we pay for our car washes right now? Just curious.
We have contracts with a specified amount for every car with our police department, with the city vehicles at Motor City and Main Street. And I want to say we have. UPC codes that scan at Zip's Car Wash on South Congress. So I want to say we have three separate contracts.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Yep, just one question I wanted to ask. I know you do, and thank you for doing free car washes for first responders. We definitely appreciate that. First question would be, what would be the average price for a car wash? Just for the public to know, I know that some residents might have that question.
Sure, three packages, 12, 18 and 22 is the price for a basic car wash. And then if you do a monthly membership, it's. 23, 35 and 38 for unlimited monthly for those same three packages.
You so much. That's, that's a really great price. And last question I was going to ask is would you consider doing senior discounts? I know you're probably already doing a lot with the first responders, but I would, you know, it wouldn't hurt to ask if you would consider that.
We absolutely consider. We, right now, we do, the only discount that we do right now is military veterans. But we would certainly be willing to think about that. I think that.
The reason I'm saying is because we have Leisureville like not far from you and we have a lot of senior, senior citizens in that area. And I think that not only for, not only would it benefit your business because you might get more business, but it would also benefit the pocket of our constituents as well.
Sure. No, I, I, without making any promises, because I, I have a committee back in the office that I always make decisions with. We're definitely amenable to that.
Thank you so much. Just, yeah, I'm just really happy to see, welcome to Boynton Beach, hopefully. We'll see what happens with the board. But really, really happy to welcome a new business and, you know, somebody who's going to be creating jobs in our city, good paying jobs. And if it goes through, I would definitely ask our city manager to make sure that we do a worthy celebration, a nice ribbon cutting ceremony. Hopefully on an evening or a weekend.
I will say that we make it hard to compete with on the police fleet pricing when we give it away for free. So.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner. Was there anything else?
No, that's all.
Thank you. Let's turn now to Vice Mayor Turkin.
Yeah, so like the presentation, I'm, I'm okay with staff's recommendation of approval. You answered my question about the military discount. I agree with Commissioner Cruz's sentiment about seniors. There's a lot of seniors in that area for the jobs, you know. Obviously, we can't get in writing, but I would like to ask for y'all to look at Boynton residents when you're doing that hiring. So that we can try to promote those good paying jobs for the community here. Prices I like, the membership I think is a steal. I, I do have a question about adopting the park. When you say adopt a park, can you give me a little bit more information on that?
Some municipalities have formal programs where you can go in and adopt a park. We, in those, so we use that nomenclature in municipalities that don't, we just do it.
Okay.
By adopting, I mean, we, we, we take care of it. We invest in it. We clean it up. We, you know, we'd like to pick a park close by and it's an important event for us and our community posture. Also an important event for our employees to understand and actively give back. And, and your question about. What was your question about before that? Sorry, I wanted to.
The local.
So our, our huge preference is to hire locally, just from a logistics standpoint. And we were very happy if you have jobs fair, job fairs that you do as a municipality. Those would be great benefit to us and we will absolutely take advantage of those. And so, yes, we always try and hire first locally. And we, we will do so here.
Awesome. Yeah, those are my only comments with that. So do we, do we, do we do this program? Do we know for the adopting the parks?
We'll still clean it up.
Yeah, I mean, listen, where we can save costs, let's do it.
I'll have to reference and get back to you.
Yeah, we, we.
Good evening, Casey Young, Recreation Parks Director. Yes, we do have the park program.
One second, you weren't sworn in.
So we're here on this development order. I understand there are administrative, you know, potential administrative relationships or issues. So I just want to state that, that this isn't necessarily related to the consideration of the conditional use in the site plan.
Right, this was a, a side question about whether this program exists.
Okay, I, I got my answer. We're good to go. So, you know, thank you. Thanks, Casey.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Commissioner Hay.
Oh, I'm happy to see this program. I was just thinking about when you showed all those beautiful amenities. And the building and everything. I said, my goodness. A car wash probably costs $500. But I was glad to hear the reasonable prices, 12, 18, 22, 38, you know, those are reasonable prices. And you plan to add roughly how many jobs? Do you have a feel for how many jobs be coming into the community?
Sure, our payroll flexes a little bit during season, but our payroll in, out of season is around 20 to 25. With about half of those onsite at any one time and then it gets up to 30 plus in season. So quite a robust staff, hence the compensation for the manager.
Going back, thank you. Going back to your, your doctor park, how do you go about selecting which park?
Great question. In Jupiter, they wouldn't allow us to do it.
One second, one second.
I mean.
Commissioner Hay.
Well, no, I was, I would. Proximity, proximity. Wait, I would never cut off a commissioner, a vice mayor or the mayor. I was cutting out staff. So I mean, I think these are valid questions for the program, but not necessarily related to your consideration of the condition using the site plan.
We'll get your question answered for sure, but we can do it afterwards.
I'm good with, with this program. It really looks good. As Commissioner Cruz was saying, I've seen your work and really, we're blessed to have you come to, to Boynton. Thank you.
Blessed to be here. So thank you.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Hay. We're going to turn now to Commissioner Kelly. Questions and comments.
Thank you. No, most of my questions were already asked. I do. The, I just want to, you know, kind of acknowledge and thank them for working really hard. I know that there was, in our conversations back in November. There was a lot of conversations about parking and, and all that. And I see that once the final site plan was, was done. I, it kind of fixed all of those problems. So I just want to thank you for working with staff. I know that they have been. I'm working with you for some time to make sure that, that this was as, as smooth as it could be. And so, no, I'm, I. Jeff, I spoke to you back in November. Your sustainability efforts are top notch and you give back to the community. And I'm excited to, to see Mint Eco come to the city. I think that it'll benefit our residents and both. Future employees, but, but customers as well. And so, so those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor, it looks like you're about to say something.
Yeah, I just, we, we are having public comment on.
We're about.
Alright, I just want to.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, you know, when we have public comment on this, just to be mindful and open to what the public says. Yeah, it could be in their backyard. So that's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. With that, we're going to move on now to public comment. After which we'll hear from staff, then back to the applicant for any final remarks. Alright, if you'd like to speak on this item, now's the time to approach the podium. Seeing no one approaching the podium, let's go to those online. Alright, there was, alright, so there are people approaching the podium. One second, one second, counsel.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, have you been sworn in? Alright, do you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony gave me the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, hope you got? Alright, please state your name for the record.
My name's Jackie Mond and I would like to know, why do we need another car wash when there really is one right around the corner? And that literally puts two right around the corner from my house. And I just don't understand why we need to. And why does it have to have lounges? I mean, what do, what do we need that for? You go in, you get a car wash, you get done. This seems like over the top and ridiculous. And while, you know, we didn't hear the money of what the city is going to put into that to pay. Because every single time I come in here, every single thing is $100,000, $200,000, $750,000, $75,000. So how much is the city going to put towards this? And I want to know, and I think we should have a list of everything that we are going to have to pay out of our taxes. Because you're not exposing that here. And we also know the lady or person from the CRA was fired and this was put under the CRA.
I'm going to pause you right there. Comments about the CRA is not pertinent to this meeting. I am now terminating your time. You are not, no, your time is done. You are expired. Thank you, ma'am. Alright, officer, please remove her from the podium. Thank you. I have given you the warning. You have seen other people get the warning. You are now resisting the warning. It's made very clear to you. Thank you. Your time has been expired. We're now moving on to the next person. Please approach this podium, state your name for the record. Have you been sworn in, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Ingrida Lombberg.
Have you been sworn in?
No.
Please raise your right hand. Is there anybody else here who's going to be speaking that would like to be sworn in at this time? Right. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony gave me the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, hope you got?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Okay, my name is Ingrida Lombberg. I'm, I'm here from Largo Point HOA Association. And I'm here because when we received notification about, from you guys about a car wash. It's going to be, start to build close to us residency where we're leaving. We are very unhappy and I left the petition with all the resident signatures. And we are happy to have close to us that car wash place. That's it.
Alright, well, thank you so much. So last person in the room and then we're going to go to those online. One second.
Hello?
Yes, he was. I did see him. You, you were sworn in. Yes, go ahead.
Ernest Magnoli, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Boynton Beach. So I spend a lot of time on Wilbright shopping and there's a lot down there to enjoy. I think there's too many car washes in Boynton Beach already, like there's. Too many everything, too many pizzerias, too many car washes, but here's another one. And then I also think that the public should be made fully aware. That when there's comments that there's no pollution here, that everything is without chemicals. I'd like to know how a car wash steam cleans an engine with oil on it. And there's no pollution. And I'd like to know what kind of tire dressing and what kind of WD-40 and what kind of other chemicals are used. Because you're making this sound, you're making this sound like it's, you know, like organic car wash. There's no such thing. And then you're using existing sewers, which I, I would like to see. I would like to see for that area. I would like to see for that area if all, all the residents within, I think, I think that. I think the requirement is notice is 200 feet, is it? Am I wrong? I think it is. I, I've heard, since I've heard this car wash being presented before the other committees and this one now. That the public's really not involved. And the last thing I want to say is. I'm a senior and if, if you think I would bring one of my cars to get washed for $28. There's no way. I can't afford a $28. As a matter of fact, I washed my own car with those spray hoses in town. I think it's a dollar 50. I'm happy with that. I get a little exercise and that's it. And I also, and I also think this whole thing about first responders getting free, does that include their personal cars or just the police cars? Does that include anything for city officials? Can, can we know that? And again, I think it's. Intruding into the area and I don't think we have all the facts, especially about what's going to be going into the existing sewer. And everybody knows that Wilbright and, and these roads have pretty bad flooding problems. And the, the more you keep adding this kind of stuff, whether it's restaurants. At some point, you got to start to realize it's not going to get any better the more you keep opening up. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. We're going to go to those online. IT, could you tell us how many people have their digital hands raised?
Mayor, we have no hands raised at this time.
And with that, public comment on this item is now closed. We're going to turn now back to staff. And then back to the applicant if they have any comments to be added after the presentation and public comments. Now is the time to approach the podium. Staff is saying no additional comments, but we are going to hear from the applicant. Go ahead.
If we could.
Sir, sir, just address.
I'm sorry, I just, the comment was made that I listened to the public and try and do that very much. And there was a, a young woman who made a comment. And I just wanted to make sure that we spoke afterwards. So if I could do that, that'd be great. Give you my business card and I'll make that happen. And just to answer a few questions, there's no city money going to us. And with respect to our chemistry audits, we publish all of the chemistry we use on our website very intentionally to answer these types of questions. And so if anybody wants to go to our website to see all the SDS sheets from all of our chemistry, they're right there. So transparency.
Alright, thank you. Let's do final rounds of comments and questions from the board. We began on my right last time. Let's begin on my left, Commissioner Kelly.
Hey Jeff, can you just very briefly for the resident who did speak about, can you talk very briefly about the south buffer? And what you're doing to enhance that? What, what? What, what there, because I believe there's a large span of space in between where the car wash is actually and the buffer wall, but can you just briefly go over that since we didn't go in depth into that?
Sure. In our dialogue with staff, we, we looked at, in particular, noise, impact of noise, and then obviously visual impact. And our entire southern border is landscaped. And if you look at our sites there, you know, we try not to let you see the site, but it's sort of a visual cue that we're looking at. And so visually, we're very comfortable that there'll be no impact from our business to anybody to the south, to the east-west as well. And then with respect to noise, again, it's another environmental concern of ours, and we use a modern technology with the two machines in a car wash that make noise. One is the vacuums, and the other is the dryers. And the decibel level on the vacuums from yesteryear was 100-plus gunshot noise almost. And currently, the vac, the, sorry, the vacuums we use are effectively, like, I think when you get to 15, 20 feet away, they're 35 decibels. Road noise is 60 to 80 decibels, so almost inaudible when you get beyond 50 feet. And our dryers are a little louder. Our dryers are at about 75 decibels at that level. And so what we've done is two things. We've looked at the proximity to the neighbors, and the residence is 300 feet away. We have, staff made this suggestion, and we readily accepted it, which is we put a wall up in addition to the landscaping, and I'm very confident, I have multiple other sites that we've done, if else with design, that this, this property will be, you know, you won't hear it. And if in fact there are noise complaints, which we've never had at any of our washes, we'll endeavor to fix them. But we do not foresee them at all. I think the modern technology is quite good.
And just one more follow-up question while you're up there. What are the, because I know some of the concerns also come through with, you know, facilities being open 24 hours. What are the hours, right, what are your hours going to be? When can they expect to, you know, if, if they would hear a dryer, when would they expect to hear that?
Great question. I'm negligent there, not mentioning it. Seven to seven on weekdays? Eight to six on Saturday, and nine to five on Sunday. Those are our operating hours at all of our sites.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hay?
I'm comfortable.
All right, Vice Mayor?
Commissioner Kelly asked a lot of good questions, and thank you for clarifying that there is zero city dollars being allocated to this. I think that's important. Good point, but there's, you know, I think we would be talking about that. Second thing is, I think we didn't understand this is a free market society, so if there's supply and demand for a business, I, and I can see that, and I crunch the numbers, and I sink into data and say, hey, you know, maybe I can't open up another pizzeria, maybe I can't open up another car wash or business because the demand is there. Why would I not to create economic development within my community? So I think it's important to remember that. Because this is, this impacts, you know, not just the principal and the entity coming forward. This creates an impact in the community, and it also produces revenue for the city as well. And so I don't think it's fair to tell people no, because, you know, someone down the streets have any business. You know, I should have the freedom to start my own business despite how many other are the same kind. So I think it's important to note. I know that was brought up, you know, earlier, is that, you know, we live in a free market. Thank you. And also, just to clarify, and I don't need a confirmation, but it's $23 or $28 for a monthly membership. So essentially, I could go every single day and get my car washed for $28 a month, which would be roughly around a dollar a day. Okay, I'm getting ahead of notes. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And I appreciate your comments, Vice Mayor. Some of us believe in capitalism, and some of us do not, and we know what that's called. So Commissioner Cruz, questions and comments?
My questions were already asked. My question was gonna be the hours of operations to keep, you know, the nearby neighborhood in mind with that. You know, that was, that was really a question. So I think the hours seem reasonable. The only thing was thinking like 7 o'clock in the morning, you know, that might be the only thing. But hopefully, as you stated, you're gonna build some sort of a wall to remove the noise so that the nearby neighborhoods are protected and are not facing that issue. And if that issue does come up for any reason, then the residents can also reach out to the city or to myself, and we can find other innovative ways to try to remediate them. Thank you.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner Cruz.
Just to piggyback on Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Cruz's comments about the hours, I'm sure you guys can identify the amount of washes you're doing, and what period of time is the heaviest traffic. Can you, can you maybe elaborate on when that heavier traffic time span is? Because I, I just, I've never taken my truck to get washed at 7:00 in the morning.
So we have, so if it's a 12-hour day, the first two hours of the day and the last two hours of the day, have between 50 and 75% of the volume is the rest of the hours, the other eight hours of the day. And candidly, we've tried to figure out whether or not there's a differentiator, but when you add all the data up and you look over a long enough period of time from 9:00 to 5:00, it's, it's pretty consistent. So 9:00 to 5:00, and then a little tail at the end. It tails off the end.
And when you say that tail end, that tail end is less volume compared to the 9:00 and 5:00?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other follow-up comments? All right, with that, we have gone through the process. We have heard public comments. And we are now going to turn to the motion. This is item 8A. May I have a motion to approve item 8A?
We'll move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Kelly. Let's turn now to.
And that includes all conditions, correct?
All conditions.
All right, thank you for the clarification, counsel. And I'm gonna turn now to our city clerk for a roll call.
Commissioner Kelly? Yes. Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz? Yes. Vice Mayor Turkin?
Yes.
Mayor Panzerga?
Yes.
And a roll call vote, the motion passed unanimously.
All right, thank you. And thank you to all those who spoke.
Welcome to Boynton Beach.
We are now moving to item or section 11, new business, item 11A. This is a discussion regarding a parks and public safety bond referendum for upcoming March 19th, 2024 election. And who from staff, city manager, will be speaking on this?
Our Parks and Rec Director, Casey Young, will be.
All right.
Providing a presentation, and after any questions, comments, we just essentially need direction from the commission on the monetary amounts of the bonds, and whether or not you guys want to entertain it.
All right, so I'm gonna ask Mr. Young if he could pause one moment for those to clear the room. Just give them a moment to do that.
Mayor, my apologies, I forgot. The public safety aspect, we'll be doing a presentation with Deputy Chief Zeller and Fire Chief Hugh Ruder.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Young, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Casey Young, Recreation and Parks Director. I'm here tonight to present on the Parks Bond and Public Safety Bond Discussion.
That clicker. We're gonna have to work on that clicker.
We'll draw for you in the control room.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it. Wow, that works good. All right, start again. Casey Young, Recreation and Parks Director, I'm here tonight to lead, to present on a Parks Bond and Public Safety Bond Discussion. The agenda, topics being discussed tonight will be a brief introduction on a bond, also a bond, Parks Bond Proposal, along with some information on highlighted projects that a bond would be able to fund, and then also to lead the discussion topics. Next slide, please. So, a Parks Bond is a general obligation bond, known as a GO bond. It's a form of debt obligation that provides local government with funds to finance large capital improvement projects to span and enhance the park system. A citywide voter referendum is required prior to the issuance of a GO bond. Again, presented to Commission March 21st of 2023, the Parks System Master Plan, we went through that whole process, gathering information, and bringing that plan before Commission, and it was adopted that night. One of the recommendations from the Parks System Master Plan was for the city to pursue a Parks Bond in order to fund the projects that would enhance and expand on the Parks System to provide requisite services for our residents. Again, this is one of the funding sources that was recommended during that plan from our consultants, and also just information gathered from the residents throughout that process. Again, the timeline of, for this project would be, obviously, tonight. I'm here tonight to present the discussion to Commission. Also, it would have to come back before Commission. Hopefully, the November 21st meeting is the goal of this, for the ballot language approval. Then, the ballot has to be submitted to the supervisory election. The deadline for that is December 19th, with hopefully bringing the Bond Referendum for election on the March 19th election of 2024. Next slide, please. The Parks Proposal, or Bond Scenarios, that we have worked out. Reposing for a 30-year term for the bond, either at 100 million, 75 million, or 50 million. Staff is recommending the 75 million option. Again, the charts on the screen show what the bond amount is, along with what the tax impact would be to our residents for an annual basis. Also, if you look at the chart below, this is for the Public Safety Bond. The options would be 35 million, 25 million, 15 million. Again, staff is recommending the 25 million option. Again, the chart shows the tax impact to our residents, depending on which amount is selected. Next slide, please. Here, I just wanted to highlight some of the projects that potential Parks Bond would fund. Again, these projects are not set in stone. These are some of the recommendations that we did receive during the Parks System Master Plan process, in order, you know, projects that would enhance our park system with growth, you know, leading into the future. So again, this is our Little League Park Master Plan, that we brought this project before Commission a few times now. This is the entire site with the city's responsibilities being funded through the Parks Bond. Again, this shows the, also the amount of what these projects would entail. Next slide. Again, another project, one that we have brought before the Recreation and Parks Board, and also with the Commission, that we have worked on in the past, would be a renovation of Pence Park. It shows some of the new amenities and layout of the park that would be more efficient for our residents, and again, with the price tag of 3.5 million. Next slide, please. Congress Middle Schools, one that was discussed during the Parks System Master Plan. This is a partnership with the school district, and one of the concerns that we found out through the Parks System Master Plan was that there was a need for more athletic fields throughout the city. Again, you know, we're addressing it with Hester, but again, this would also address baseball, football, track, those type of amenities that we have heard from our residents that would be needed. Next slide, please. This is Meadows Park, one that we have worked on for design to improve this park. Would add some different amenities, a different layout, to allow more access to the park for the surrounding neighborhood. So again, the Parks Bond would address our regional parks, what we consider our community parks, along with our neighborhood parks, too, to improve the entire park system. Next slide, please. Again, just another list of projects that we would propose to be included with the Parks Bond. Again, none of these projects are set in stone. These are just some ideas to give you an idea of, you know, the improvements that a Parks Bond would impact. Again, the Boynton Beach Senior Center. This would be to convert it into really a multi-generational facility for our seniors to have activities, along with, again, Recreation Center west of I-95. This would be a proposal for a new facility, along with improvements to Harvey Oyer, which includes the fishing pier and other amenities that are needed, and also to renovate some of the structures that are already in the park, oceanfront park improvements, again, neighborhood improvements, just, again, just a list to give you an idea of projects that we would fund, that the bond could fund. Next, next slide, please. With this side, I'll turn it over to Boynton Beach PD in order to give you insight on some of the projects that they would propose for the Public Safety Bond.
Hello, Matt Zeller, Deputy Chief, Boynton Beach Police Department. So with this, we have one slide, luckily. You can see that we took a focus on the essentials for public safety. We worked with the fire department. They have their own slides, but the first item was the Public Safety Building PD Substation. That is for future growth, as we continue to grow as a city. Essential communication, telecommunication tower for infrastructure, public safety radios. It's the radios that the officers carry so they can communicate. Citywide security camera, infrastructure. Main focus is going to be the parks and other city facilities. Additional resources for technology for investigations. All that will be tied back into our real-time crime center. That allows us to have information that we can provide the officers, the detectives, hopefully, prior to something taking place, so we can see it and address it accordingly. And the beginning stage of any incident is our communication center. Make sure that our dispatchers have all the information and the tools necessary for their success. Excellent.
Next.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Hugh Ruder, Fire Chief. So for our portion of the public's, yes?
One second. Is the mic on? Can you check? Hold on now.
There we go. Okay, good. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Hugh Ruder, Fire Chief. To keeping in line, when we think about a public safety bond, keeping in line with the strategic planning objectives of this elected body, with keeping public safety at the forefront, you know, trying to think about how we can improve existing structures, and how can we look into the future? What you're looking at right now is a proposal for Station 3, the rebuilding of Station 3 out west. And that building is pushing 40 years old right now, and is in desperate need of being rebuilt. If you can click to the next slide, please. So the next slide gives you a good indication of the items within the fire department that are needed, not only for currently, but also for future needs, as again, we, as Chief Zeller said, as we look to, to expand the fire department into other areas. The Emergency Operations Center right now has about $400,000 in needs. It's very antiquated technology within the Emergency Operations Center, and that could pose an issue for us if we do have any kind of major event. So we do want to kind of try to get ahead of the curve there. The rest of the items, the Marina Complex, would support both the fire department and police boats as we move, you know, at Oyer Park to, to build and continue that complex. We also do have radios within the fire department that are expiring next year. That cost is $900,000. And the station recall system is a $750,000 item. Now, that one is extremely important because the new station recall system will essentially allow 60-second savings in response times. And then there are some improvements to Stations 2 and 4, and again, that's just through aging of those structures that they need to have these improvements made. And then they've Fleet and Logistics Facility, which is old Fire Station 2. This will really help Fleet and Logistics in the future, as they're kind of overwhelmed with space, and it allows us to work on public safety vehicles out of one central location, and as we look to try to improve our ISO rating to a Level 1, which ultimately will reduce insurance costs for the citizens. So, and we're ready for any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Casey, was there a follow-up to that? It looked like you were about to say something.
Nope. Next slide, there's another slide.
Oh.
And again, this is a Parks Bond discussion for a commission that we're bringing forth to you tonight in order to provide some direction to staff on the next step in this Parks Bond process. So again, some of the topics for discussion would be the Parks Bond support to move forward with the referendum, also a Parks Bond amount. So again, some of the topics for discussion would be the parks bond support to move forward with the referendum, also a parks bond amount. From the options that were provided, along with the public safety bond support to move forward referendum and in the public safety bond amount again. The the two bonds would go to the to the the residents to vote on would be two separate questions. So again, they will vote on the parks one and then also have to vote on a public safety bond. It would not be combined together. Next slide. And with that, any questions?
Thank you, Casey. My turn now to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Commission. What I what I really want to do is just give some lay terminology as far as especially for the audience and anyone listening online. The difference is when we did Town Square, we did what's called a P three bond, public private partnership. And that essentially puts the decision making ability into commission hands as a whole body. What this does is a general obligation bond, we're kind of following what the city of Delray Beach did. And we spoke with city manager Moore there, very, very intelligent individual. He kind of gave us some pointers as far as directions doing this bond and putting it in the people's hands to make the decision. So if the people don't want the the bond, then they can vote no on it, and that's kind of the direction we went. So the city itself, we're not absorbing the debt services that we absorb with the P three bond. Essentially, that's going to be their prerogative whether or not they want to enhance their community, they want to enhance the parks, senior center. The golf course clubhouse, things of that nature that this this bond could be used for. And public selfie, public safety self-explanatory, I know that was a number one initiative. Of this body as far as a strategic planning initiative was concerned with, so. That was the thought process, we thought it was best to get direction from the commission, go to the general obligation, put it to referendum, let the people vote for.
Thank you, City Manager. I I have a quick question for staff, perhaps it's to counsel about the process. If this commission were to move forward to put it on the ballot and if it were to be approved by the general public. The specific projects were would still have to come back to us, right? I mean, these were just estimates and suggestions of possible projects. But could still change over time. I just want to make sure that's my understanding is correct.
Yeah, just briefly, what you typically have attached to the document that you approve at a commission meeting is a list of projects. That would be eligible for funding through either the parks bond or the public safety bond. And then if the bond passes, then you would go through your typical procurement process and come back to the commission for. You know, the the planning, the design, the construction of those projects.
All right, thank you. You've answered my question. Let's begin on my right with Commissioner Cruz and we'll go around the dais. Questions and comments for staff?
Well, first of all, I wanted to ask why the presentation was not included in the agenda. When the agenda was submitted or posted. And that's something that I also discussed during my agenda review, and it doesn't appear that it was added. The reason why I care is because there might be residents that see this on the agenda. They might want to understand ahead of the meeting what this means or what this is all about. And that wasn't the case. So, you know, just going forward, I know we'll have more discussion later, but. Going forward, I would really please like to ask staff to just please include any and everything that is relevant to any agenda item. Before the meeting and not have it be, you know, surprised, especially something as important as this. With regard to the bonds, you know, during the earlier part of the meeting. I did request to add for discussion infrastructure. As City Manager stated earlier, that is correct, commission has agreed previously to focus on public safety. As our number one priority and also infrastructure as our top two priorities. So I just wonder why infrastructure was not something that we thought about when we thought about creating bonds. That's all. And then. Yeah, I mean, I I we definitely have to have discussion on this. I I understand why we might need a certain amount. Of funding to support, you know, public safety and to support our parks. However, I don't fully agree and I've said to staff before, I don't fully agree with, you know, the parks master plan. I don't believe that everything in there is, in my opinion, accurate and adequate for our city. For example, the Leisureville lot where we agreed unanimously. To include as a green space and do absolutely nothing with it because that's what the community wanted, the parks bond. You know, has it there for like two million dollars. So. If that happened with something as simple as a empty lot. Where the people have decided that they don't want anything on there and the master plan is saying that we should spend two million dollars on there. Where is the discrepancy? And also, you know, I haven't heard of a single constituent tell me, and I've said this to City Manager before. I haven't had a single constituent tell me that they received the survey that was given. Neither did I. So, you know, I'm I'm going to be honest, I'm going to tell you what I think. Do we need, do we need a bond? Possibly, we possibly do. Now we have to think about the amount of the bond and we want to make sure that we're very fiscally responsible. And we're careful as we make this decision, because yes, the people will decide on it. But at the same time, we have to think about all of our constituents and the financial situation. Of the people that we represent and how much, you know, this is, we should definitely have, you know, several conversations with our constituents. As we go through this process to also get kind of their feedback on where they stand, you know, how much are you okay with? With paying for, you know, before we move forward with this. So, you know, I do have some meeting schedules with some of my constituents, but. I'm sure you can expect as I'm kind of always go that way, but, you know, I'm I'm going to push for for the lower limits of the money, just to be responsible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Was that, was that it? Okay, let's turn now to Vice Mayor Turken.
Casey, thank you for the presentation, Chief Zeller, Chief Ruder, thank you guys. I I I think this is an extremely complex discussion, there are a lot of variables to it. I saw a lot of high ticket items on there that I wasn't, you know, too happy about. I know there's a necessity with that. I think the other thing for all of us as the board to consider and city staff is. We just approved public impact or park impact fees that puts the burden on developers instead of residents. And so my question would be that anticipated or forecasted revenue, are we taking that in mind? And looking at this bond, I know that's not sustainable because we can't project how much. How much of a revenue driver that's going to be, but as I've, you know. Howled on the dais for the last year and a half about this rapid development that's been approved, there's a lot. And, you know, that's, this is a double edged sword here is there's a lot of people coming in to the city now. And it's making an impact on our infrastructure, on our public safety needs. And so because those decisions have been made. We have to be responsible in making sure that we provide. A a higher gold standard of service, whether it's our parks, whether it's public safety. But also infrastructure, I think that's that's a huge key component here. So the caveat to that is because there's so many units coming in. You know, that developer is going to have to pay, you know, anywhere from, you know, three hundred, I forgot the parks impact fee at the top of my head. But let's just say for conversational said three hundred to five hundred dollars per unit for, you know, anywhere from three hundred units, two hundred units, three fifty. You know, we got four or five of these projects coming in just the east side of town in District Three, where we're going to see the biggest impact. And so, you know, there's, there's, I I think there's revenue chance there. That we can forecast because those projects have been approved, whether it's been by this commission or by previous commissions and, you know, I understand that they're gaining. Attraction and moving forward. You know, but because those decisions have been made, what I don't want to have happen is thousands of people moving into a congested area. Someone picks up the phone to call nine one one, it takes fifteen minutes for someone to get there, you know what I mean, because we're understaffed. So that's one of my talking points. The other point, you know, for the substations, I understand that, you know, we're looking at those, I think. And we're. I don't want to call it fluff, but I think with future growth, we're, you know, I would imagine that we're entertaining the idea. Of potentially annexation with that future growth. So my my comment for that is when you annex, you're going to increase your tax rolls. From those properties that you're absorbing. So. Is that an accurate estimate? Are we considering that potential annexation? Granted, this would have to happen. You know, as a as a revenue driver for those substations, or does that need to be paid by a bond that the people need to vote on? So for for me, there's a lot, there's a lot of variables that jump into this. I can go ahead and say from the the high end option, I would not support staff's recommendation. I wouldn't support to promote forward because of some of these higher ticket items. And whether there is or isn't consideration for the potential impact fees. I know that we had discussed previously about a public safety impact fee, and I know there was a study being done. That could generate, you know, anywhere from three hundred to five hundred dollars of revenue per per unit. For commercial multifamily development. And so I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of other revenue sources. That we can look at instead of putting the burden on the people. But I think the beautiful thing about this bond is the people get to decide, let them make the choice. You know, we we're a city of eighty two thousand people, not everyone's going to agree on on one or two things. But I think everyone would agree that, you know, we 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 care about our city, we love our city, and we want the best quality of life in our city. And so I don't have a problem letting the people decide this choice. You know, I'm a resident, obviously, and I'm going to vote on this if it moves forward. And that's my right, the same way, you know, another eighty two thousand people have the right to vote on whether this is something they want to be brought forward. Someone's concerns about parks may be more or less than someone's concerns about public safety and and that's absolutely fine. But again, I just, you know, I think there's other revenue generators that we can kind of ease up the burden on the people. And again, I know they're not sustainable and this would potentially be a thirty year bond. And I think from the lower end, it was like four dollars and fifty cents per month per household. I don't remember what the public safety bond was. Can, is it, you okay if we get that back on the screen?
Absolutely. Let's pull up that information for Vice Mayor.
I think it was one of the first slides.
Yep, slide number three. Next slide.
Okay. So, so let's say, you know, just for. Conversation, so fifteen million public safety bond, right? That's the lower end. And you have twenty eight, twenty eight fifty nine annually by twelve, that's two dollars and forty cents a month. If two dollars and forty cents a month is going to make or break. You know, an officer showing up or better service, you know, like I think people could swallow that. When we get to that, when we when we get to that tripling that for thirty five million. You know, I, again, like, I don't, I don't know. And so I would, I would most likely be okay with maybe the lower end. Because again, this will be the people's choice, this will be on the ballot and we'll let the residents decide. And so I admire staff for proposing that this way instead of how the town square dealings were done. Something else and I had a huge brain fart. Okay, infrastructure, right. So, yeah, I think Commissioner Cruz brought up a great point about infrastructure. It's huge too, and like, you know, there's a, there's other avenues we can take. I got an agenda item, you know, coming, coming up about, yeah, go ahead.
I I just wanted to say as far as the infrastructure concerned, the language can be crafted with a parks bond to include an include an infrastructure component. That we could use to bolster our C I P, being that the uncertainty around the certex and the county currently. Is in existence that was taken into the consideration when we were actually crafting this. And I'm not sure why it wasn't conveyed, but there is an infrastructure component to this.
Okay, so that's, that's good. I think that's important for the public to know, and I think that's important for us to know. So when we say component, right, do we have to go back and do another study? And, okay, so because when I look at all these ticket, the the ticket items, they're just the C I P projects. You know what I mean? And so those impact fees will will tie in to the budget and.
So what we have earmarked right now for C I P, especially with the parks, especially with public safety, a lot of the bond. Fun in in the event it's passed by the public, a lot of that can you be used to offset the current C I P budget that we have. So indirectly, this is going to allow for more infrastructure spending and paving roads, bridges, subterranean infrastructure with piping. Backflow preventers, what whatnot, I mean. There's going to be a component to where this is going to bolster our infrastructure because it's going to bolster our C I P where it's going to take the large portion of the burden off of that budget.
So what you're saying is utilizing, so let, you know, let's fast forward, like, say this was approved by members of the city and they voted yes on this. What you're essentially saying is that, you know, the offset of this cost and the bond would pull away from what we're budgeted. For these current capital improvement projects, which then you could in return utilize that for infrastructure?
Correct, and that would be placed in the the decision making would be placed in the hands of this body. The only thing this is going to give us an opportunity to do to actually have another funding source.
Right.
But at the end of the day, the commission would have the final say in what projects do get done from the bond funding and C I P, so.
Yeah, listen, I mean, I'm 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 okay with, you know, with the the lighter options and allowing the people to decide if, you know. It's 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 up to the the community ultimately, so I don't see anything wrong with that. I I I would say though, and Commissioner Cruz have brought this up and I just want to make sure I hear it again for the record. We are not tied into these presented capital improvement projects here. Because, for example, the Little League Park, that's six million now, and I don't, I don't think, you know, a year ago or however long ago, we had discussed this, it was that high of a a price tag. And so, you know, I just want to make sure that if the people do decide to go for this, that. You know, we're not beheld to these certain projects. So, yeah, that's, those are my comments, you know, I I think the rest of what I. Rest of my soap opera is, is, you know, focusing on operational necessities. You know, I know we have an art assessment and I personally would like to look at other avenues for, you know, focusing on infrastructure instead of that. Especially if it's going to be a burden on developers or, you know, instead of residents. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm going to turn now to Commissioner Hay and Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Hay?
Thank you. Indeed, this this is a big item. And I I don't think the the public is bashful in stating what they want and what they don't want. It's going to take a. A good sales pitch, whatever you want to call it. Usually when you come up with these barns, they they don't have a good track record. But I will say that, you know, when I listen to presentation and. I think when you came, when you did the the parks bond. It came up with, after you add all those up, came to around fifty four million, fifty four and a half million roughly ball pockets. Is what it total. And so the question that I would have is. Why are we going for seventy five million? Which would. Be a hundred and forty two dollars to the public. Where we could probably go with the fifty million and it would be knocked down to ninety five twenty eight. And we could find. Some other funding source or do something for the other four and a half. That, that's a question that 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 jumped out at me. So. I I want to go with, I think in order to get this by the public, you're going to have to. Show them. What's in it for me? They're going to, and like we just stated, I'm going to be voting on this myself. And. Do we really need all of what we have? I'm, I'm going to trust that we do because we will have another bite at the apple. Then when I looked at the, the fire department, I think you came up with roughly two point eight five million or somewhere in that, uh, neighborhood and again, uh, I'm, I'm just, there, uh, there are a lot of variables here. When I add those two together and I'm, I'm coming somewhere around fifty-eight million, uh, or something like that. I see you hand up, you want to correct me on something, go ahead.
No, no, not to correct you, anything. I, I, I just want to make the point that, um, the projects that were highlighted in the presentation were just a, a highlight. It is not a complete list. Again, uh, part of the process, again, as you mentioned, would be a sales job. Again, there's a whole campaign that comes behind, uh, once you guys provide us direction, uh, to, to give you an idea of what all the projects would be to add up to the amount that is decided on. So again, uh, when we look at the parks and master plan, there's a, there's projects that are listed that go well beyond even the hundred million. But again, um, you know, the, the current state of the city and, and, you know, the taxpayers and, and keeping in mind the residents. You know, these are the options that we wanted to bring forth. But again, the, that, the list that was provided in the presentation is not the list in entirety, just to make that point.
Okay, and, and that's good. Glad to hear that. I'm all for it. I can see it. But it's, it's going to be a up here about, up here battle to get the public to see what you and I see. Not that it can't, couldn't be done. But I, where I am right now is to move ahead with it and let the people speak. Because eventually it's going to, at the end of the day, it's going to be their decision. For thirty years, I, I think it is.
Yes, correct, thirty years, correct.
Thirty-year time. I'll still be here. Why you guys left? But, but I think it's a, a great process and, and idea that we, we have for our city. And it can't do anything but benefit, it's just a matter of the, the funding sources and getting the, the public to see what, what we see. So at this stage, I say, move ahead with it. With the caveat of where we're going to get the funding from. I, I would like to go with the lower amounts though. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just to be absolutely clear, because this is what I need from every single member of the commission here. Do we move forward? And if so, at what level? So I'm hearing that you are going to move forward or you're in favor of moving forward at the lower option, not the staff recommendation, but the one right underneath it.
Well, let, let, let me, let me, let me back up on that, okay?
Okay.
Because I, I'm, I'm trusting staff to, to give me some further information to substantiate that recommendation. So what I'm saying is, I'm willing to move ahead with the staff recommendation.
With staff recommendation, all right? All right, uh, let's turn now to Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that there has to be, I agree with Commissioner Cruz, there really needs to be a lot of conversation with the public. Moving, in moving forward. Because I feel like this is, it's a huge, um, kind of ask for us to even ask the public to consider this and, and support it. Um, you know, looking at this and we're looking at, Casey, what's the life of a park? Like, what?
As far as, uh, in, infrastructure in the park, um, you know, playgrounds probably go maybe ten years. Basketball courts are like seven, uh, you know, depending on the location of the park. Obviously, our, our infrastructure at our, uh, water, uh, facing parks deteriorate a lot faster than our other parks. Uh, again, and it depends on wear and tear. So there's no real set answer on that. But again, ten, fifteen years, maybe.
Right, so my, you know, one of my, um, concerns is, you know, I, I think it's, it's great to be realistic in, in projects, but I think that we have to be realistic as to the life of a park, um, as well, so that we don't run into, we have built parks, we have found parks, we have bought land, we have done all this stuff. But we're only ten years in and now what? Now we have parks that need to get bit, get fixed again, or need to get renovated, or need to get upgraded. And so I am, and I, and it, this is just me being cautious, is that although I think it's, it's good to put out there great ideas and, and what we have, but I think realistically, we need to look at what, um, how this can, can last. And that, um, you know, we're not just looking at, uh, you know, at immediate improvements and what can be done. And then we're ten years down the line and the bond money, we're using it up, um, or what we've expected. And it's not paid off yet. And so then, then where are we? You know, and, and so this is just me asking for us to be a little bit realistic in, in what, in move, when we're moving forward and having conversations with the residents. What can they really expect from this? You know, if we, you know, if we go with, you know, the small, the lower end or, or staff recommendation, what does that truly look like and what can we do to make it last? So that in twenty years, we're not looking at parks or having another conversation like this or similar down the line. I probably won't be having this conversation, but you never know. Um, it's a long ways away. But, you know, what, what do we do? So those are just, that, those are my, um, concerns and kind of my thoughts, um, is how we, um, how we sustain this. You know, I know we're going to lose, uh, here pretty soon, the SRTAX, which is for approximately, what, four point five million dollars um, in funding that goes into our, um, CIP that we use for, for various parts throughout the city. So we have to, you know, we have to keep that in mind, that that's, uh, improvement funds that won't, won't be available. So, but I also, um, Vice Mayor, to your point, you know, with new development coming in, you know, why should our current residents carry the load, uh, for our future residents down the line? So I, I, you know, I, I want, you know, to, you know, piggyback on Vice Mayor's point that we need to look at, at ways. And I know we've kind of bounced around some ideas and, um, staff. So I would like to, you know, make sure that we stay on top of figuring out ways that, um, that we can, um, kind of put some of that burden, you know, across the board. But I know one thing, um, and Casey, it doesn't have to do with parks, it can, um, um, it has to do with the public safety bond, we can switch over to that. Um, you know, we have, um, Chief Bruder, can you come up to the podium, I just have some questions? So, you know, um, we have a fire assessment. Um, and so, you know, we're asking the public to further support public safety. And there's, you know, the fire aspect to that. You know, and I, and I'm speaking from District Four, Fire Station Three. Should have been replaced a long time ago with fire assessment funds. Um, and so I, I want to, uh, to challenge you to look at how we can better utilize the fire assessment for improvements or for, um, kind of your checklist. So that when we do, um, or if we do go to the residents, that, that they understand and they know that this is for a specific purpose. They know we're going to get Fire Station Three out of it because I know as long as I've lived in District Four, we've been promised a new fire station and we still don't have a new fire station. And we're still paying a fire assessment and we're still paying all this stuff. So I, I want to, you know, that's something that's important to District Four. We have an outdated fire station, is well outdated. And so, so in, in moving forward, I, I know the residents of District Four are going to want some confidence that if they approve this, that they know where that money is going and that, and that they're going to get a new fire station out of this. Because, um, that's something that, that we've been promised for a while and it hasn't happened. So, uh, those are my comments as far as that goes, but, um, and I know that, um, I know both on PD and fire, I know that there have been conversations with regard to the radios and upgrades. And I think that that's in the works. I know you're applying for grants on a regular basis for those things as well. So I'm sure that this checklist will change, um, moving forward to as far as needs and wants. But, um, those are kind of my concerns. But I wanted to get your feedback really quick on Fire Station Three and just how, um, realistic it is to the residents that that's really on your radar.
It, it is to the point that that's why it's been added into this public safety bond. Because being able to, uh, obtain ten million dollars to build a fire station in this day and age isn't easy. The fire fee is not enough money to cover all the items that we need, whether it's trucks, whether it's infrastructure, equipment. So these are continual purchases and you can either budget for them every year and add them to your general fund budget, or you can try to, you know, find other funding sources. Um, and we do everything we can to increase revenue, uh, to help offset those expenses. But unfortunately, increasing transport revenue and increasing fire prevention revenue, there are just not enough money to pay ten million dollars for a almost forty-year-old fire station. So I think that, you know, grants are great and, and we're going to continue to, to pursue grants, but there's no guarantee with a grant. We, we know that we have a building that needs to be replaced. You know, whether or not, uh, you know, there's been issues with mold over there and stuff and we've been able to eradicate that. So we've kept our public servants safe. But, you know, it, it needs to be replaced and, and how do you do that? So the idea of this bond funding is a, an excellent way in which we can provide, um, the constituency, the, the things that they need to be able to keep the first responder safe and be able to have a station that we can respond out of, uh, to meet their needs. So the answer to your question is yes, this, this, the particular ten million dollars, it's part of that twenty-five million would go towards the rebuilding of Fire Station Number Three.
Thank you, Chief. And, and while you're up there, real quick, what do you foresee, um, long-term with the new development coming in? What do you foresee long-term to be your fire safety needs? Are there any other things first looking down the line at, you know, five, ten years down the line as development happens? Where do you see your needs? Do you see them changing? Do you see, um, you know, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but where, I mean, what are we looking at, you know? And, and my concern is across the board. You know, in, in every aspect, um, PD and FD and parks, um, you know, ten years down the line, where do, where do we see the need? Uh, in, in, and changing? And how can we make sure that we are being the best stewards of this bond money? Should the residents choose to move in that direction?
I would, I would agree with you completely. And I would say that it is very hard to, uh, really extrapolate that information. But I can tell you, as the population continues to grow, um, as we hopefully move towards the western part of the city and as we grow. And that, that's the only way we're going to really be able to increase revenue. How can we do that as a city? How can we look at all of the things that we need to pay for, not just within public safety, but within the entire city? How do we accomplish that goal? Well, the only way you're going to accomplish it is by growing your city or increasing taxes. You can only increase your taxes so much. So by increasing revenue, by stimulating your economy and the many ways in which this body is, is taking that to heart and doing so, I think we'll, we'll pay dividends in the long run. But by the same token, we have a responsibility to our constituency to provide that service and to keep the buildings with which they've already paid taxes maintained to the level that they need to be. So that means increased cost. There's nothing we can do about that. And as we, as we increase the number of people that we have within the city, there is going to be a, a major increase in call volume. As that call volume increases, we are absolutely going to need more stations, more equipment, more firefighters. But that, that comes from increased revenue, uh, which hopefully comes from the city growing. I mean, obviously, if we're continuing to pay without growth, that's a recipe for disaster and, and no municipality wants to see that occur. But we want to see a stimulation of our economy, a growth in the areas where we see growth. And as such, the rest should fall into place. But again, we have to maintain what we have. You know, you can't build on a shaky house of cards or it's going to fall apart. So, you know, we need to unfortunately make these tough decisions that are necessary to fund these public safety initiatives.
Right, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Listen, Chief Zeller, can I, um, similar question to you. You know, is, where do you see, you know, a need in five to ten years with the growth? What do you see from the police department's perspective? What the need will be, um, to support this need for the bond? I, I know we got the checkbox list, I know what you're proposing, but truly what are the needs? Because a lot of those things are, you know, budgeted items or grant funding items. And, um, so just briefly, what, what do you see, um, as a need moving forward to, um, to support this bond initiative?
I, I agree that we've been extremely creative in, in the things that we do in law enforcement, it's continually changes.
Chief, could I ask you to just be a little bit closer to the mic, please?
Better?
Yes, thank you.
So the creativity is going to have to continue as we move forward. Uh, we've been faced with so many obstacles this past year with, uh, vehicle shortages, uh, we pushed so hard in getting officers, so we're going to continue to do that. We have a phenomenal training unit that has been unique in, in being able to get these officers on the road for the same reasons that the fire department has to be responsive for the calls of service. So continuing to, uh, develop there and making sure that we have those resources, vehicles, that's the essential. Uh, having those resources, keeping them on the road, making sure that they're, they are working. We don't have vehicles, we can't get the calls, right? We can't go by car or walking beats or bicycles. So having the infrastructure, uh, making, with Chief Bruder brought up the, the building to be able to have the, uh, fire trucks and the police cars on the road is essential for us. So those infrastructure needs are, are ideal for, uh, this bond.
I think the, um, and I just, City Manager, just, um, you know, thank you for, for going this direction. I think that, um, the public, um, wants to and needs to, um, be involved in decisions like this. Unlike ones that have been done in the past. Um, and so I support moving forward with this. But I want to know from staff, I know that we have, it's kind of a tight timeline. What's the, I mean, I really, what is the city staff's plan or what's the city's plan as far as involving the public and speaking to the public outside of just our regular commission business meeting? Um, in order to really, um, you know, educate them and get their support or non-support, but to understand where the residents are coming from. So, um, what is the plan, um, as far as that goes?
Uh, right now, we're, uh, Andrew, I'm, uh, I think I'll pass this one over to you to talk about the firm that we've been, uh, helping, helping us, uh, kind of actually answer some of those questions that you just asked, Commissioner Kelly.
Sure. So we, we kind of believe, we watched what Delray did, we watched what Wells Palm did. They both had successful bond campaigns. They engaged a consultant to help
They both had successful bond campaigns. They engaged a consultant to help them market the projects to the, or the bonds to the community to give them, educate them, to know them, exactly what they're buying. Basically the same sentiment which you're bringing up today about, you know, if I'm going to spend my dollars, I want to know where it's going and what it's going to be used for. So we even, we, we have proposals right now, depending on the outcome of the direction we get tonight. If, if, if this gets moved forward, we'll engage them. We have proposals ready to engage them. You're, you are correct. There is a short term time turnaround. We spoke to the SOE. There are other election dates out further that we could have possibly utilized, but because of the, the SOE, this was the only opportunity that we have now is March 19th, 2024. After that, she told us that the next election would be our municipal election, which would be March 2025. So we had a quick window, a quick turnaround. We do have consultants. We, we've gotten the proposals. So they'll be using that marketing campaign to go out and educate the public to exactly know what it is. There's other things that we, they put in place as well. I think Billy Delray has an oversight, a citizen oversight committee. So there's different things that we can do to help ensure to the public that their dollars are going to be spent wisely.
Thank you, Andrew. Those are all my comments for right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. And let me just speak to my colleagues here in the dais because I am hearing mixed sentiments. I hear a lot of questions, a lot of hesitation that I hear, I want to move forward. I, I just need some clarity on your position. So two questions to ask my colleagues. Do you want to move forward? And if yes, do you want to move forward tonight or do you want to table this item and come back to get information, get your questions answered, whatever the case may be? And if we are going to move forward tonight, I need to know at what funding level, right? Those are the two questions. And I know we just finished with you, Commissioner Kelly. So let me go back to my right. We just need to know, are we moving forward tonight? Are we tabling? Are we, we, we just need to have a sense of where the majority is at, right? Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to add a couple of things that I have here, notes from earlier. Thinking about the 100 years of the city of Boynton Beach, why is it that we need this now? Like, you know, and excuse my thought, but I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my head across. I understand inflation, you know, the price of everything has increased significantly. I understand, you know, staffing costs increases every year. I get that. But in regard to the, to the parks specifically, how have we been able to maintain and build our parks with the advarum dollars that we receive? And why are we not able to do it now? And so, Mayor, you're asking my position. I would like to support this. I can definitely understand that we're growing as a city. And, you know, as we get more dense, we get more people here, there's more calls to service for our first responders. I understand that. Commissioner Kelly, you brought up an excellent point earlier about fire station three. Although it's not my district, I drive by there all the time and I see how rundown it is. And I, I do agree that the residents of your district deserve to have an adequate fire station as the rest of us do. So, you know, I, I, I do agree with that. Now, my concern comes with the amounts of funding. You know, I would like to be fiscal responsible and try to focus on the less, the better, but also making sure that whatever we do is adequate enough to maintain us. Because this is again, a 30-year term. I do have a couple of questions after this, but moving on to the parks bond. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry to say it, but I think it's outrageous that the minimum amount is $50 million, in my opinion. I, I can't justify this. And I'm sure that anything at all would be beneficial, right, to the city? So why didn't we include, if we're talking about different options, the highest one for public safety was 35 million? And we know that public safety costs a lot of money and it's something that's necessary. For parks, it's more of a leisure. It's more of a, a want and not a need where public safety is a need. So I'm just, I'm seeking to understand, and please enlighten me if you have an answer, of why you're recommending $75 million? And listen, I understand we all have bosses and we have to agree with whatever our boss says, so I get it. But for our, you know, let's say city manager, like, why is the base $50 million? You know, and like the bottom of the totem pole is 50 million. I'm pretty sure that we could do a lower number than that. And that I don't think that we need to turn Congress Middle School into a 12.5 million dollar project. I don't find that fair for my constituents. I don't find that fair for myself as a homeowner and resident here. So would I be in support of some form? Yes. But the number has got to come down significantly for me to support the parks bond. In addition to that, I do want to add, during the beginning of this meeting, I requested, you know, for, for my colleagues and I to discuss a little bit of infrastructure. And when we talked about strategic planning and what we want to do with the city and what matters to us. As mentioned before, you know, as we're growing as a city, as we're getting more dense, obviously, we're going to need more support from staff or public safety. But it makes me think about, why are we not including infrastructure if we're going to do bonds? I mean, in my personal opinion, I think infrastructure is more important. Because it's the roads that people are driving every day. It's what we see every single day. I can tell you, the last time I went to a park, it was the dog park by my house. And I personally don't frequent parks a lot. Here and there randomly I will. But I do drive on the roads every day and I do feel when there's a bump on the road, when, you know, the condition of our roads, when we have issues with our underground pipes, I think that's a priority. And I think that's something that we should consider. And I would definitely appreciate if we can think about infrastructure as a bond instead of specifically parks or maybe decreasing the amount significantly of parks to a very, very, very much smaller amount. And thinking about potentially adding infrastructure because I think about it this way. I don't, I don't understand why, again, we have to spend $75 million, which is being recommended by staff, to be spent on parks. But yeah, we're not spending that money on under, underground pipes that are necessities to, you know, for toilet flushing or for, for everything we need to do, showering, our roads that are, you know, for example, in one of the neighborhoods in my district, Gulfy Harbor, you know, they haven't had paving in over 13 years. And when I go to a town hall meeting in the neighborhood, everyone's upset and they're thinking that we don't do anything. So if I were to go to a town hall meeting and talk to my constituents of different parts of the city and I try to tell them, we're going to do a parks bond, but yeah, we're not taking care of the necessities. In my opinion, the parks bond would be more of a, of a leisure, of a want, which is a good thing to have, but it's not a need. So I would say that public safety and infrastructure are needs. It's been stated before. We've talked about it during strategic planning sessions. And now I just have a, a couple of questions because this is my first term and I've never dealt with referendums before, so I would like for someone to educate me. How would we pay for this? Is it, is it just homeowners? Would renters also, you know, have a piece of the pie that they would have to, like, how would? And I'm not sure who would answer this question, but let's say in a theoretical scenario that we pass a, let's say, a bond for infrastructure and a bond for public safety and maybe a minimum one for parks. In that theoretical sense, how would, who would pay for it, right? Is it homeowners on their tax bill? Is it like how, that's kind of my question.
Typically, you know, you, you go to referendum on the, the bond issue. If that passes, then you have to go to court to have the court validate those bonds and then they'd be issued. And then the annual payment would show up as a separate line item on your tax bill for a homeowner. So if, you know, the homeowner, in theory, for the public safety bond, which so a $28.59 charge on their tax bill, separate and apart from the advarum, it'd be referred to as a, a voted debt millage, I believe, something like that.
Okay, so then a follow-up question to that, just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, would be, would the burden completely fall on homeowners and not on renters of the city?
On property owners. So if you get a tax bill, it'll show up on your tax bill.
Yeah, I, I have a concern with that because as a homeowner, I do not believe it is fair for homeowners to carry the entire burden of a bond issue when we have other people who live in the city who also use the parks, who also use our public safety, who also use our roads, to not have any skin in the game. And so I don't know if anybody can explain this to me, but personally and as a commissioner, I don't find it fair that only the homeowners are the ones that take the burden for this.
It's, it's the property owners.
The property owners.
So if there's a renter, you would think that the owner of that property is somehow going to compute that into the rents that they're collecting. But I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not a, I'm not a landlord. I'm not a property owner. I don't know how they do it. But in my mind, that's, you know, what I'm thinking.
I might want to just maybe, off the record, another time, just talk to staff. I'm just really seeking to understand. I'm not experienced in, in referendums personally. So I would like to seek to understand and not assume anything. And maybe we can have a, a further follow-up conversation on this.
Yeah. Commissioner, I have heard many questions come from you, from Commissioner Kelly, from, from everybody. And with that, I would recommend a motion to table because I want everybody on this board to have all of their questions answered before we make a decision either way. I know there's just been a lot of back and forth. Let's make sure, let's get, excuse me, all the information that's being requested.
Motion to table this item. And then I have a couple of comments.
All right, so we do have a motion.
I'll second it for discussion.
All right, there we go. We got a motion, a second for discussion. Go ahead for your comments.
Thanks. Yeah, so I just want to say, Commissioner Cruz, you brought up a lot of good points and I, I can definitely agree with most of them. And I think when we go back to our constituency, because that's what I want to do, is I want to go back and before I get on my comments, I just want to ensure with staff, we do have time to table this item before making a decision to get with our.
I can answer that. We did build in a little bit of flow into the schedule. That's why we brought this item tonight and it's why a little bit of the rush to get it in front of you. So you can have some dialogue, ask some questions. Ultimately, the deadline that we have to have is we have to have the resolution approved, authorizing a ballot language, and then we have to have that delivered to the SOE by the 19th of December. So that only leaves us November 7th, November 21st, three more meetings to accomplish all that.
Okay, so we have time.
Yes.
Thanks. So I just wish, and, and I'm going to say this so we can think about this in the future because I've been saying this the last year and a half, it's been like, like, we should have this passion and this tone before we're approving projects that are 300, 400 units that are rented and especially specific to the CRA district where majority of those tax revenues don't go back to the city's coffers where we can't use them on policing and parking or in parks. And now we have to have a bond. And so I, I think this is important that in, in future conversations with what our vision is for the city, that we're mindful when we make these impactful decisions on our residents of what the consequence could be. Because the consequence could be, well, now we're, we have to do a bond because we can't support the existing residents, yet we're having future residents go in. And so, you know, I, I, I just want to make sure like that same passion and that same attitude comes before we have a huge project moving forward in an increased dense area, specifically in the CRA district where, again, the city is not going to see that tax revenue to support these services. And so because of those decisions, here we are. I 100% agree with the 50 million is way too high. And, you know, I think, I've said it before, operational necessities. If I drive to work, you know, I need the roads to be good. I don't need there to be flooding. Whether there's a piece of art or a park there, I can still get to work. You know what I mean? And I don't think 50 million for, for, for a park bond, you know, I, I, I can't swallow that. So I'll go back to my constituency, but again, I think this board should be mindful before we approve projects, what the consequences of the approval of those projects are. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, everybody. There's been a lot of discussion had already. Commissioner Kelly, I know you were out, but there was a motion to table and a second, FYI.
Can I make one?
Absolutely.
Is there?
Yes. Let's call this the final round and then we'll move on.
That's fine. It's just, City Manager, you did touch on, and I think Commissioner Cruz was out when you did. And I'm sure it was clarified while I was out. But can we, can we just, can we name or create the bond dealing with parks to be parks and infrastructure? So that it, it is clear that, because you did touch on that, that it's, it was intended to be that purpose. But can we, can we make that crystal clear that what we're looking at is a, a parks and infrastructure bond so that there's no question mark, there's no, I want that to be clear. Because I think then, when we realize and we recognize that it's not just a parks bond where we're just looking to improve our parks, but it really is to improve infrastructure and parks and the city as a whole, then, you know, we can, we can swallow, and I think the residents can swallow, a couple of extra dollars annually if they know that it's truly being used for that purpose. But, you know, like I said before, you know, Vice Mayor's point to, you know, looking at what we can do for future development in impact fees, I think also should be considered too, as a way to have this, you know, not just rest on our current residents, but our future, you know, residents and developers as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hay, final comments so we can call the vote?
Yeah, final comments. We're going to, we're going to table this, but I wanted to ask the consultant firm that you mentioned, what's the timeline on that? How much time would you think they would need? Because if we are trying to meet a certain deadline, that's going to be factored into the equation somehow. Do you have a feel for it at all?
Yeah, we met with the consultant. The timeline that I laid out, they can meet that. The majority of the work. So we have, you'll have specific language for the ballot that needs to be crafted. That'll be the first priority. They've already seen it. We've already had draft language available, ready. The second part of that is educating the public from December on through to, up to the March election. And there, they, there's plenty of time for them to accomplish that.
So we could still make it?
Yes.
Just, since we're going back and misogynizing the equations, I, I just want us to all think that public safety was the number one priority that we all talked about. So just keep that in mind. Also, let's factor in the idea of what just happened with the, the Mint Eco Car Wash. They adopted, they're going to adopt a par. I, I just feel that we can get other organization developers to do the same thing for the maintenance part of it. But we, I, I like to see us really focusing, add that to the equation. But I'm all, all for it. This Boynton Beach is, is growing by leaps and bounds. And we, we need to just not rush into this because like I said earlier, this is a big item. And I would not, all the points that have been made, I would not want to put undue burdens on people who coming after us. And so we need to make sure that we have as much as possible, all our ducks in a row and make sure that we're making the right decision with the best information. So.
Thank you, Commissioner Hay. Vice Mayor, you made a motion to table. Just for clarification, is it motion to table to next meeting? I assume, I assume by then. Yeah, that's the question, is there enough time for everybody?
So that would be at two weeks?
That would be for the November 7th meeting or the November 21st meeting to bring the item back for, to finish the discussion?
So three weeks essentially.
Yeah.
November 7th, I'm okay with November 7th, I want to hear from y'all because I want to make sure.
Okay with that.
Okay.
So, all right, and is there a second for that?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of the motion to table this item?
I I wanted to say.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those who oppose, say no. This, the ayes have it, the motion passes, it is tabled, Commissioner Cruz, let's come back to you.
Yep, no, there was a comment made earlier about approving projects, a lot of the projects that are like up in the sky right now are approved before we even got here. And second to that, there's property rights and there are certain things that we literally have to approve because people have certain density rights based on where the properties are located. So, I mean, if if we had a choice to not do that, it would be great, but, I mean, looking at the CRA area and even now with Senate Bill 102, which takes into consideration a one mile radius with regard to height and density for for new construction, which doesn't even have to come to commission if it's 40% or more affordable, otherwise it does. You know, it's, I don't know, I just didn't want a comment to be made where it is true, I read the bill. So, you know, I I just wanted to say that in regard to the legality of it, a lot of times when we are asked questions of approving projects or not for site plan approval, it's more of a legal question of whether it meets code and and that sort of thing. But yeah, I'm I'm fine with tabling it to November 7th, I I wonder, I don't know if it's, if it's possible to maybe advertise the meeting and and advertise specifically what it's for. Commissioner Kelly, you brought up earlier about including infrastructure, thank you very much for that. You know, I, to follow up on that, you know, I would like to specifically request, and I, unfortunately, we already made a motion to table and we moved on, but I would like to request that we specifically have a bond for infrastructure that is separate from the parks bond, so that the infrastructure dollar amount can be slightly higher than the park. That would, that's something that I I would, you know, support. And the reason for that, it's not that I trust, you know, it's, I just, if you have a bundle of money that is, that could potentially be spent for different purposes, how can we tell the residents or the taxpayers, like, it's going to be spent on infrastructure, like theoretically speaking, we could be using 10% for infrastructure and 90% for parks or, you know, something along those lines and still be in compliance with the bond. So to protect the integrity of infrastructure and to make sure that we are allocating dollars, again, I'm not, I don't, I have to literally have a town hall meeting and, or a few before the next couple of meetings and and actually talk to my constituents about this and see what's being proposed with the assumption that the community supports it, I'm I'm just, you know, I'm going to support whatever my constituents want to do. I will educate them on the subject, but I do want to have conversations with them regarding this, but, you know, before I go ahead and have those town hall meetings, you know, are we in support of having, you know, a separate infrastructure bond where we know for sure a, that a certain amount of money will be specifically allocated for infrastructure and it will not be mixed with the parks, so that we can understand that that is a priority in itself.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to move on, is this comment urgent?
No, I'm just going to say I would support focusing more on infrastructure, that's it.
All right, thank you. I would recommend that first communicate with the city manager to think of some options of how we might go about that and bring it back next meeting for discussion.
I just, I don't want to, thank you, Mayor, for that. But I don't know if it's possible for us to like get consensus on whether yes or no, that's something that the commission will support, because obviously staff would follow, you know, whatever lead the commission gives. So I don't know if that's a possibility for us.
So, right now, this is, you know what, let me turn to counsel, maybe he's got some good advice, and I'll, Commissioner Hay, I'll come back to you, counsel. It looked like you were about to say something, so.
With respect, with respect to the use of the funds, if anything's approved, you will have specific projects identified in the resolutions that identify whether they're parks, whether they're public safety, whether they're infrastructure. And those funds will only be able to be used for those projects that are identified in those resolutions. Then secondly, you've tabled the item. So the question is whether or not you want to put it, take it off the table and discuss it further, or if you just want to table it to your next meeting.
That was my point. We have tabled this item. And that means that we don't continue to vote on little pieces of it. We we bring it back the next time, just like that's what tabled means. And I was going to ask you legal that that question, but you answered it already. So we we would have to reverse all of what we just voted on in order to to move forward with what Commissioner Cruz is doing. So I I'm, my position at this point is, we voted to table, let's table it, and now let's move on to the next item.
Just, just to respond to that, I had one last comment that I needed to make before voting happened, and so because I wasn't able to make that comment, I had to make it after it was tabled.
Thank you for that clarification, Commissioner Cruz, I had no issue with making those comments. With you making those comments. We're going to move on now to the next item on the agenda, which is item 11B, this is to conduct annual performance evaluation of the city manager. Pursuant to the city manager's appointment agreement, the city commission will provide the city manager with a performance evaluation no less than annually, this will be Mr. Ducker's first performance evaluation. I'm going to turn now to our HR director, if you could introduce yourself and open the item.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, Tenille DeCoste, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. As the mayor said pursuant to the CM's agreement, a commission will provide a performance evaluation no less than annually. Human resources provided each of you the performance evaluation document, which included 10 major areas of responsibility in conjunction. According to section 3.2 of his agreement, the commission may increase in the base salary and or other benefits of the city manager. So the direction that I need is the, first, the discussion and also provide authorization for the mayor to execute any changes in the agreement.
Thank you, HR Director. Let's go around the days first for our evaluation. I know that there was a written form, if that is the avenue that my colleagues would like to take or have taken to submit evaluation in writing. In my past experience, that evaluation is sometimes, though not always, I followed up with a verbal on the dais evaluation, it is at your discretion at each of you. Let's go around, let's begin on my left, Commissioner Kelly, for your evaluation. And then after we hear from everybody's evaluation, we can have a discussion if there's any amendments required in the agreement, okay? So.
I shouldn't talk about any of that in my initial comments?
I would have, I recommend that we first hear everybody's position before we have a discussion of do we give a raise or not a raise or any amendments to the agreement. However, if you really want to, I'm certainly not going to stop you if you want to just do it all in one go.
No, I will follow your directions.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Um, I, C M. Andrew, we had a a meeting. I didn't kind of use the questionnaire as a guideline because there was a lot of things that I felt that I am not necessarily privy to or would know. But I've, I have had conversations with city staff as well. And I think, you know, I I took a chance you know, based on our interview, you know, to hire you and to support that. And I haven't been disappointed, except for one time. I think that you have made you have built a strong executive leadership team that has been very successful in moving the city forward. Some of the positives that we talked about were, you know, health insurance was huge, bringing Tenille into the city has been a breath of fresh air in in HR. You've saved the city millions of dollars in health insurance. You know, and and have progressed in in moving the city forward. We successfully completed the budget. So, you know, so there's been some, you know, some very positive things, and I look forward to seeing you continue to grow as you continue your education. You know, some of the things that we talked about, one of the things that was a room for improvement was your desire to please and assist everyone. And that's your personality trait, and sometimes that gets you in a bind when you take on all the tasks that are being thrown at you by, you know, 800 plus employees and five city, five elected officials throwing things your way, so, you know, I just, I I know that this was a learning experience for you as well. And so I appreciate you taking on this challenge. I think it has been that, and you've been challenged in many ways, and so, you know, I'll continue to challenge you through the next year, but I look forward to it, you know, you saved the city, you know, in working with HR, obviously, and and creative ways of of saving money to the city, but also bridging the gap in vacancies. Not only on with our city employees, but at, you know, PD and FD, and we should be very proud of the work the executive staff has done in all the levels of government to really push the city forward, so. So I thank you for that. So I'm going to leave my comments there, but thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly, I'm going to turn now to Commissioner Hay for your evaluation and comments.
Well, City Manager and I had a long discussion. He knows I was not in favor of his qualification for the job. Has he improved? Yes. Is he there, in my opinion, right now? No. Is he making progress? And that is yes. We were very honest with each with each other, we were very open with each other. I discussed areas that I saw for his improvement. I talked about his strong points, weak points. And I think we have a good understanding in moving forward. So I'm not going to go all 32 questions here. If you guys want to, want to see it, you can request it and and I have nothing to hide here. But I'd just like to say overall, at the end of the day, I thought he's, I gave him a three, he's doing satisfactory. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hay, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so how long do I got? No, I'm not going to discuss any of your shortcomings up here publicly, we discussed what your opportunities improvements could be privately, you know those, and so I'll measure that next year. I I I do think that from a year ago to now, I have seen significant improvement, especially for someone who's inexperienced, to be able to save millions of dollars in a city budget, help resolve, and and when I say the CM, I really mean staff, right, because he is only as good as the culture and the executive leadership and the blue collar and the white collar workers and the whole culture of this organization, PD, utilities, public works, fire, right? A reflection of culture is a reflection of leader, and so I talked to many people in all different departments and, you know, Commissioner Kelly touched on it, you know, great with the personality, you know, what what I like to see is an executive not hide, you know, in an ivory tower, but talk to everyone from the ground up. Right, and you see organizations all over the world, military included, taking that ground up approach versus that top down leadership. And so I think that is huge to see. I think that's why there's been so many initiatives done in such a short period of time. And we got over the town square litigation, which was a huge, you know, huge, huge ball dropped and and through staff's hard work, you know, in this body. You know, that was resolved, we have a law, we have a law enforcement department that is the most staffed it's been, I think, since 2009. You know, how, why did it take so long to get that fully staffed? I don't know. I think it's about trusting and giving autonomy to your fire chief, your police chief, your other department heads, and making sure you have good relationships with them and let them run their organizations without micromanaging that lead to those results. And so I'm very happy to see that. We have a destination fire department, right, and and again, I don't want to give you the credit, but to correct, you were able to allow these executive leaders that credit, right, and that's real affectionate of you. The other thing I notice is, you know, you'll, you'll call the residents, right, you'll call the residents, doesn't matter what the concern is, if you can't, you'll make sure someone calls the residents, you know, whether it's executive staff or, you know, someone in a department. And one of the biggest things that I've heard on the campaign trail and, you know, a difference from the last year is that the new city manager talks to us and responds and communicates. We might not agree or like what they say, but at least there's communication. And I think when you're operating a government, transparency is key, and with transparency, you have to have communication. Yeah, I think, I think that's pretty much it. You know, we didn't have the, we decreased taxes first year, we didn't have to increase it the second year. And so, you know, there's, there's a lot of wants, there's a lot of asks, and we're able to operate that fiscally, in a fiscally responsible manner, and again, you know, that's with your leadership, but also the finance department, and so I think we've done a lot of great things lacking the experience, so like satisfactory, I don't think that, I mean, it's like, it's like asking a college, a college football player that comes in, right, and then goes and wins a Super Bowl, I'm not saying he won the Super Bowl, but, you know, you don't have that lack of experience, but when you can produce so much and the residents see that impact, it, you you could be the most experienced person in the room, but if you don't have the drive and ambition and work ethic, you're not going to see results. And so for me, you know, anybody can almost learn anything and gain experience, and it takes time to get experience. But what you can't teach is personality, the ability to relate with people, and your work ethic. And so for that, I'm 100% confident and trust the mayor to enter negotiations with the city manager for a rest, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Cruz.
How can I follow up on that? Right, okay. So I did go over the 30, what, 15 page document or 30? 15, yeah. We took a quite, I think it was at least a two hour conversation, you know, where we talked about a lot of details of, you know, the occurrences in the past year. Overall, you know, as previously stated, I don't, one of the areas of focus that we discussed in regard to improvement is customer service in the city, and it's something that I've experienced, it's something that constituents have experienced with, it's not just one department, with, you know, different departments within the city, but I'm sure that within the next year, we're going to be able to work on that and we're going to be able to make improvements because we definitely want to make sure that our residents feel appreciated and heard when they call into the city. We talked about, you know, when I send requests to your office and and follow up, I think that, you know, you've done a really great job at relaying what is needed from my side to be able to get responses from all of you pretty quickly, so I definitely appreciate that, and I think at the end of the day, that is the main key component of a city manager to be able to take the policy that the commission wants to follow or the commission and the mayor want to have and allowing staff to follow through and to be able to complete those things for us. So, you know, especially lately, it's been really great, you know, I think that every time I ask for something, pretty much I get a a pretty soon response with an answer and, you know, if. And, you know, if, if it's something that takes a little bit longer, then I'll get an answer, you know, a little bit later. But one of the things I would say that is important is, you know, after the transition that we've had, I think you've done a great job, you know, with your people skills, with being able to choose the right team. You know, building the team is important. And I know I'm doing your evaluation, but I also want to thank Andrew, Adam. You guys are the ones that are here, but literally every single member, I know, but she's not here right now. Wait, you're here? Oh, hi. I haven't seen you at all. Hi, Catherine. And Catherine as well, but also everyone under you because, you know, you can bring, you know, as you mentioned, like orders to follow through with things, but it really takes staff, the passion and the ability to follow through with it. So, but from a leadership perspective, I think you've done a really great job with, you know, taking things that are requested or phone calls or issues, whether it's with, you know, fire issues, police issues, you know, Mario's apartment, like anything at all, even when we had the questions about the utilities we had. You know, we get to have very lengthy two hour conversations and maybe arguments sometimes where we disagree on certain things, but at the end of the day, you know, it's important to get the answers that you need and to be able to, to count on somebody who loves the city and who's able to continue to move us forward in the right direction. As we've seen before, you know, are there improvements that could be made? Absolutely. Same for me and my job, like, you know, same for everyone, right? So there's definitely things that we could improve on. As mentioned again, customer service is something that I would really, really like to see within the next year. And yeah, but overall, I would say that you've been doing a really good job. And thank you and thanks to all of you as well for everything you've done in the last year.
Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. As for myself, I speak with the city manager almost daily. And with that, I don't give him an annual performance review. I give him an almost daily performance review and he knows full well how I feel about his performance. And, you know, obviously, we've seen it, we've discussed it. There have been seasons, let's use that word, seasons of success. And that is a testament to his hard work, his grit, his character, his personality, perseverance. All of those things combined with the excellent executive team that he has surrounded himself with. So kudos to all of you for working together and for achieving the things that the city has achieved. It has been a challenging year, but sir, you met the challenge. And, and I agree with my colleagues, is it perfect? Is there room to grow? It's not perfect and there's absolutely room to grow. And, but there will always be room to grow and there will always be things that we can do better. He knows full well of my expectations of him. Being the person that I am, my expectations are through the roof. And I demand excellence. I want nothing less. I demand that of the people around me and of my students, and I demand that of the city manager. So we saw what first year looked like. I'm looking forward to what the second year will look like. And with that, I will reserve the remainder of my comments to private, private sessions. I do have one tangential comment related, but nonetheless. It is about the format of our assessment forms or these evaluation forms. You know, I've been here enough years to know that these forms truly are not adequate, nor are they appropriate in my opinion. There are questions on here that there is no way that we can properly evaluate the city manager. And I don't remember which number, which page, for example, his reputation or the whoever the person may be's reputation amongst other city managers. You know, that, that's, I'm not going to go run around to other cities and ask other city managers to see what they think of our city manager. There are questions on here about how well he is supervising staff. I'm not here with them during the day to watch him supervising other people. That is, it is, it would be disingenuous of me to give scores on those metrics for which I cannot honestly provide metrics. And so I just want to share with my colleagues that in the future, I do want to have a future discussion, not today, but sometime in the future about some sort of other evaluation form and metrics to make sure that it is more appropriate and it's something that whoever the city manager is can take away with them and actually use it and be more productive with it. So I will leave my comments there. Let me turn now to my colleagues, now that we've heard from each other and our perspectives. There are two items from my understanding. Do we want to entertain an annual raise? That's question number one. And question number two, from what I gathered, speaking from HR and some other folks and of course the city manager, there is a request to modify his agreement to fully compensate the cost of his master's MBA program semester cost. I just want to make sure that both, everybody here is aware of those two items. Commissioner Kelly, I see your hand is up. You want to begin?
Fine, thank you, Mayor. Yes, that was, you know, as, as I understand it, Taneele, and correct me if I'm wrong, but as I understand it, his contract went, as it relates to 11.7, which is the education, that it's not consistent with other contracts for other employees and that reimbursement. And so I would like that to be consistent in that, in there not be a cap per se on the education portion. Obviously, the program costs what the program costs and so.
Commissioner, can I ask you to clarify consistent with what? I'm sorry if I missed it. Consistent with?
From what I understand, the wording in the other contracts, it doesn't have a cap, correct?
And his has a cap, correct?
Right. So.
He wants it, she wants to remove the cap. An 11.7, it says, an amount not to exceed $5,250 for him to obtain that master's degree. So there's a cap for him.
But there's not a cap in other contracts. It's just education fees are all paid.
Okay. I see your point. So I see your position on the educational item. What about the annual raise? What are your thoughts on that?
I think that I could support an increase consistent with what our staff would get percentage wise. I don't.
But we don't do evaluations. We don't have a cap. We receive a COLA.
Right. So what's the, is that three?
We just received 5%.
5%?
Yes.
Unless you're comfortable with it.
That's for general employees. Unions are different, of course.
Yeah, so that's my position.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Kelly. Let's turn now to Commissioner Hay. Your thoughts on the educational amendment and also to the annual raise?
I do believe that there should be a cap on, on the education. Did I just hear you say 5,250?
Yes, sir. $5,250.
That's the current amount.
For a calendar year, that's the current. Yes.
Current.
For a calendar year.
For calendar year. Then I'm, I'm good with that. And I can support the 5%. So that's me.
You said you can, I'm sorry. What'd you say?
I can.
Can, can support. All right.
Fifty two fifty.
So.
And the five.
The current, so in terms of the education, you're recommending no change because that's currently five. Okay, all right. Let's turn to Vice Mayor.
Already mentioned about the raise for the education. I am open to discussion of increasing that. Again, Mayor, I'll let you enter in that negotiation and with, with my, go ahead.
You need to provide direction as a body.
Okay.
And authorize the mayor to sign.
I am speaking for myself. Well, the agenda item, or wasn't that said earlier? We had to authorize the mayor?
To. To sign.
Right, so that's what I'm saying.
But you, you need to.
So the mayor's not entering negotiations?
No.
Okay, so that's what was said earlier.
Unless that is the direction of.
But that was said, that was said earlier. What was said earlier was the mayor would, yeah, to enter negotiations. So is it that or is it we're deciding now?
I said authorize for the mayor to execute any changes. That's what I.
I see.
Okay, so not.
We will determine Vice Mayor as a body. And I wouldn't do this unilaterally regardless. I would hear from all of you.
Okay.
What the majority will is, right?
Okay, so my understanding was that we were all going to have our comments and then you would negotiate with the CM and then it would come back for approval later down the road. That was my understanding. So that's not it? Okay, got it. Thank you.
If that is not the will of this body, then there's.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, with that being said, I, I think we need to look at a few things. We need to look at what other city managers make, right? And I think we need to look at the, what Commissioner Kelly had mentioned about the education cap. So what I'm understanding is that this specific city manager contract seems to stick out from other city manager contracts? Or is that other contracts in the city?
Well, I have, I did look into that, Vice Mayor. And I'll just give you some examples.
Oh, great.
For example, City of Delray is 239,000, Royal Palm, 239,000, Green Acres, 249,000. I want to say the Town of Jupiter is probably the closest, 236,000. He was a police chief for 17 years and now is a city manager for two years and he's at 236,000.
And the current salary is 205?
Yes, sir.
205,000? Yeah, so like, so like 10% would probably get to that. And I don't know if 10% is the right number. You said Green Acres is 249,000?
Yes.
Wow.
249, 3753, to be exact.
You don't have their budget, do you?
No, I don't. I can get it for you if you.
Nah, I'm just kidding. I just think it's a lot because I'm sure their budget isn't as large as ours. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with an increase. I'm okay with, with the education. I think a lot of discussion last year was, you know, hey, we want, we want to see you gain that knowledge or experience. And so if we're asking this individual to do that, I think we should do that. I don't know, I, I don't know, maybe, maybe extending it from instead of calendar year to semester? You know, I, I don't know. Because I think if there's no cap, then, no offense, I just don't want to, you know, hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Harvard and you know what I mean? Like.
Vice Mayor, could I chime in on that point? He's already in the program. So, you know, I, I really don't foresee that number significantly changing. It might fluctuate with some inflation costs, but.
Okay.
The program is the program, right? And if he were to enter into some further education, that would have to come back before the board. So there wouldn't be a surprise he's now in Harvard or some other program. And that wouldn't be a surprise.
That was my concern because I, yeah, I know that he's, so I just want to make sure if there is no cap, that it would be specifically for the program he's enrolled in now. So we don't have to worry about the other concern.
Right.
Okay.
And if he were to, again, if he were to go to school some more, I mean, he would have to bring that up to us.
Okay, okay, that's good to know. Yeah, I would want to be consistent with other executive staff. Let me, I'll, I'll pass my comments for now. Let me calculate quick.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm going to turn now to Commissioner Cruz.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. I would support the expansion of the education cost for this specific degree that is currently being studied. And then I agree with Commissioner Kelly. I mean, just to be fair with all staff, I think that, you know, as we, as we head down the totem pole, the staff that ends up doing the majority of the heavy lifting are the lower level staff. And so if we do a significant percent, you know, I, I just want to think about morale and making sure that we're fair with, with compensation. As you previously stated, you said 5% to be equal to what the rest of the senior staff received. I would think that that's fair, so I would support that.
All right. Commissioner Cruz, I very clearly heard 5% as well, is that correct? As well as adjusting the educational number to allow for the program expenses? Okay? And is it fair to say we could just remove the cap to allow for that? Would that, would that be something you would be in agreement with?
Yes, that's fine.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. Vice Mayor, you were about to do a follow up?
So 5% would put us, put him at 215, $215,000 roughly. And then I guess if there wasn't a cap for the schooling, you could, you could say that's additional, like compensation, right? And so I'm okay with that. And then once, you know, we can have that conversation next year of anything outside of that 5% because that, that 5% is, I think, essentially a little bit more because you are having compensation for your schooling. So I'm okay with 5%.
All right. It seems that there is now majority. All right, so the direction here is to amend the agreement such that there is no cap, just enough to allow for the expenses of his current program to be covered. And the second item was to allow for a 5% raise, right? That's what is, I heard from the majority. Are there any final comments on that before we proceed to public comments? Comments from my colleagues?
I'd like to know the, on the education, how did that vote? Was it 4-1?
So. Now, you'll have to have a motion.
Yeah, we'll have.
With those items.
Right now, I'm just gauging my colleagues.
My position stays the same, the 5% and the 52.50 cap.
Okay. All right. Counsel, were missing anything else? Are we ready to proceed? Direction is clear? Yep. Let's go now to public comments on this item. And if you would like to speak specifically on this item, now is the time to approach the podium. All right, let me switch the timer, state your name for.
Hi, Ernest Mignoli, 710 Northeast 7th Street. I'm glad I came back because I know that, in my opinion, is constant, constant. More money, more schooling, more benefits, more sick days, more vehicles, more time.
Sir, I'm going to stop you right now. Okay? Your comments have to be specifically about this item.
Finished.
You're finished.
That's all you ever do is cut people up.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to approach the podium to speak specifically on this item? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, we're going to go to those online. IT, is there anybody with those, with their digital hands raised online?
Mayor, there's no one online with their hands raised.
Okay. With that, public comments on this item is now closed. Any final comments from my colleagues? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
And Counsel, I want the motion to be worded clearly, so we need.
So the motion, as I understand it, would be to amend paragraph 11.7 of the appointment agreement to remove the last phrase related to the cap on the amount of educational expenses per, per calendar year to provide for a 5% increase in the salary and to authorize the mayor to execute the amendment to the appointment agreement with Mr. Duggar.
Yeah, so move.
So the, okay, I'll second for discussion.
All right, go ahead.
So to be clear, if the mayor decides to change it to.
I cannot.
He's, no, he's not changing it.
You're just authorizing me to sign it.
It's authorizing him to sign it, right?
Correct.
Okay. So if the city manager or whomever's in that position, the way we are voting here decides to take courses that's going to cost 5 million, 6 million, I mean, not million, but thousands, okay? If they take a class or two that costs 6 million, I mean, why I keep saying that? $6,000 and he can, he actually can do that.
Yeah, first, this contract only applies to your current city manager, so it wouldn't apply to anybody else. Secondly, it's only related to the program that he's currently enrolled in.
Okay, on a program that he's currently, okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I very clearly heard a motion and a second. If there's nothing else, further discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. If I'm not mistaken, we have concluded all, let me double check. Yes, we have concluded all the items of this agenda, closing comments, and we can move on.
I do like, I'm sorry. I, I would like.
Closing comments, thank you, Commissioner.
For Taneele, my understanding.
One second, let's wait for her to come to the podium. That's okay.
That's okay. Well, I can be talking while she's coming.
Okay.
In the past, in the past, we, we have not always done a written thorough evaluation like we did this year. Okay? And so my question is, and my, it was my understanding that we. that we were going to do one every three years, okay? I don't know where I got that from, but that, that was, that, that was my understanding. So what, clarify that for me. Are we going to be doing a thorough written evaluation of the city manager's position every year? Or we're going to skip where, every other year? How's it going to be done?
So per his contract, it's annually, no less than annually. So you have to do it every year? It's just I'm going to, I'm going to tweak the questions or change it to get approval from what, what you guys want, what the commission wants.
Because that has not been always done.
I assume, yes.
Nope. You answered the question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly, closing comments?
Just to piggyback on that, Tanille, don't walk so fast. You know, you don't have any comments necessarily, I don't think. But I think, I don't know if we want to put it on or if you've gotten enough direction from us that simple is, is better and to, I don't know if we need to put it on future that maybe one day down the line, we kind of have a form set up for this purpose. But maybe we've given you enough direction where you can come up with something.
Absolutely, yes.
And then come back and, so we don't wait a whole year to see it again and make sure that we're all on the same page.
Thank you for the, for the sentiments, Commissioner. I wasn't going to wait the whole year.
Yeah.
But thank you for piggybacking on that.
Oh, you might not wait a whole year, but then we won't see it. So we don't know what you're doing.
Absolutely. Absolutely. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor?
The comments that.
Commissioner?
Comments that are written by the city manager on our evaluation at last page. Do we get to see that?
If you would like to, it's public record, so.
Have a problem? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
All right.
Do I get to talk before we get to it?
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
No, I just, I just, I just want to say, I agree with shortening the form, absolutely. I think the mayor already brought that up, the future gen items, let's do that. And then I just want to say thank you, Shawna, for showing up to this meeting. I know you haven't started yet, but to jump the gun and kind of see what's going on, see what you're walking into and staying until nine-thirty, I appreciate you. Thanks.
Honestly, I thought you were on vacation. One, Commissioner Haye, there's one more person. One more. You have nothing to add? And Counsel wanted to add something.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you all and everyone in the city in this interim position. Tonight is my last meeting and Ms. Shawna Lamb will be sitting here at your next meeting. We look forward to working with her during the transition. And once again, thank you for the opportunity to serve the commission, the staff and the citizens of Boynton Beach.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, now we'll entertain a motion to adjournment. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor of the adjournment, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.